Yes.
Yeah.
Hi. All right, I am going to call to order the Village Board meeting of June 22nd, 6:00 PM. I am going to suspend Robert's rules of order. And can I have roll call, please?
Okay, I have President Langfeld.
Here.
Trustee Xander.
Here.
Trustee Pomakowski.
Here.
Trustee Thucius.
Here.
Trustee Kettleboulder.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item was to have a discussion with the county executive. He sent me an email saying that he had a conflict, so he will not be joining us. So we can pass on that one. So we're at public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue either on or not on the current agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. While the village board encourages input from residents, it may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda. Do we have anybody?
We do. We have one comment that was submitted right before the meeting here. Char Meyer, 3111 Bolinburg Street, Cross Plains. Char?
Yeah, I'm sure you boys know that somebody on Highway P is wanting to have chickens in their yard. And I want to know why it wasn't stated after I talked to, I think it's Bill at the, at the village, that there was only going to be four chickens? And why wasn't that stated in the letter that we got? And how they're going to be kept? And there will be no roosters? Why wasn't that stated in the letter? Because I probably wouldn't have said as much as what I'm going to say now. Because I do not want chickens in my area.
So I, I could answer that. So in the letter that we sent out, we did reference the code to the ordinance regulating chickens. We generally do not write down all the regulations because the ordinance, I mean, all the regulations would take a number of pages. And so we then depend on if you do, or if you do object to it, for you to contact me and I can walk you through all that information.
What, what are they keeping these chickens in?
They are required to keep it in a hen house and...
How do they heat that in the wintertime? What do they do then?
They would, it would be up to them on how to heat that. We don't have any way in our regulations of the states that they're asking.
And who in the village goes around and checks that he doesn't have more than four chickens? How often is that done?
So the initial inspection is done by myself, the zoning administrator. And then from there, we depend on the owners to keep with the ordinance. And anytime they are in violation of the ordinance, or if we do receive any kind of complaint from adjoining neighbors, automatically they would then come in for a hearing on their violation.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear there are no roosters because I don't like being woke up at five o'clock in the morning. I lived on a farm too many years for that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You betcha.
Anybody else?
Yes, so I have two comments that were submitted in writing before the meeting. One is from Casey Fitz Randolph, and I see that Casey is on here with us. Casey, can you hear us?
I can. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Thanks for giving, thanks for giving me a couple of minutes, even if virtually, I appreciate it. I wanted to, I wanted to touch base, or I should say, just share a few thoughts on, on the proposed, and I might get this wrong, really a big reason I'm calling is just to learn more details. But I'm going to say the proposed wellhouse over off of, in our, in our neighborhood park at Whole Fielder Park over there off of Gill's Way. I want to learn a little bit more about it. We obviously, Jen and I live right next to the park and as probably most would, we have, you know, some concerns surrounding everything from any noise to our limited, very limited neighborhood park green space to resell value, et cetera, with a structure going up back there and any more concrete. But beyond, beyond our concerns, I think really we wanted just to ask a few questions that, you know, you can certainly address later in the evening when you, sorrys. We're good?
We're good. We can still hear you.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, questions, I guess our main questions would be, one, have any alternate locations be considered? I mean, we, being in an established neighborhood over there, of course, we love to think that, that the town could plan ahead for it, put it in either a newer development where it could be worked into a neighborhood with the least disruption, if you will, visually and otherwise, or maybe into a commercial area where, you know, aesthetics in a neighborhood park and limited green space are not at, at risk. And then beyond, are there any, are there any alternate locations? We'd like to learn a little bit more about, you know, exactly what is proposed, size of building, maybe building materials, any parking lot that would come along with it? Any noise, any well that would be drilled, you know, like access through the park to it, just kind of some general questions around what it would entail. So that's it. Thanks for, thanks for, yeah, thanks for having me.
Okay, thank you, Casey.
Bet.
Then we had a comment submitted by Peter Benson. I can't tell if Peter is with us on the chat or on the online webinar here. Peter, if you're with us, please go ahead and unmute yourself or raise your hand virtually and I can call on you. Yeah, I don't, I don't see him raising his hand or unmuting, so I'll go ahead and read his comment. Mr. Chang, I'm writing to respectfully request that the board refer ordinance 06-2020 regarding animal control back to the Public Safety Committee for further discussion. It is my opinion that the ordinance as presented could be improved with further discussion and a more nuanced crafting. Specifically, any amendment should consider the following. One, consideration and of and inclusion of language relating to electronic, i.e. shock collars, and whether there are circumstances where they may be treated as equivalent of a physical leash. Two, consideration of whether a six-foot leash requirement on any public property may be overly restrictive. The language as written may be construed in such a manner that a retractable dog leash of any length greater than six feet is inadmissible. And I am not clear if that was the intent of the Public Safety Committee. Consideration of higher fines for dog, or three, consideration of higher fines for dog owners that do not pick up after learning. Respectfully submitted, Peter Benson, 1746 Tubbs Court. And that is all the submittals I have for public comment. Do you want to go down this list at all?
You can just open it up if you want to speak.
All right. Okay, yeah, so we had, we had several people joining, join us on the Zoom meeting close to and at the time the meeting started. I was not able to capture all of you that may have wanted to sign up to speak. Now would be the opportunity for you to do so. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Do I once? Twice?
I think Pam did. On the second one down, I think she muted herself. No.
Pam, was that a hand?
No. Oh, okay.
Sorry, no.
Okay. All right, third time.
All right, we'll close public comment, move on to consent.
On to consent agenda. I have a motion to accept the consent agenda. Upon request, any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business. Judy?
Um, I'm, so move it. I just have one question. The people that are pointed to the village committees are aware of the fact, is that correct? Kevin and Jennifer?
Yes.
Yep. So move on, consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? So moved. Consent agenda has been approved. Okay, report from village officers. I'll start with village president. The finance subcommittee has met a couple of times. I think we're making some good progress. Probably some of the work that we have done, we'll be talking about later tonight, but that is moving forward. We're meeting every Tuesday from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM. That is all I have for tonight.
Mine's short and sweet, too. Just as you know, the Lions are having their Bratton Burger wagon on July 4th, I believe down by Piggly Wiggly. And at the moment, Spike Redd, Termin is still on, and it's the first week of August.
All right, thank you. Any other trustee? Phil?
As we're into phase two, the library is now partially open. It's open to coming in, but by appointment only for 30 minutes. As we come into the next phase, we'll be opening up to 45 minutes. And then the shelf should be opened up on phase three as well. Right now, the shelves are not open up, but you can go in, look at magazines, periodicals, get on a computer with an appointment. All you got?
Kevin?
Just a quick report on the downtown parking task force. We met once and we have another meeting scheduled for next week. And we're moving along in a clip. I think we'll have some, I hope we'll have something to report at the July 4th. But it may take a while to see how the discussions go.
Anybody else? Lori?
Oh, okay. Yeah, so public safety items. We did, there's a sign, no jumping and diving ring ordered for the bridge. So this should be, is it on?
We haven't received it yet.
Okay.
There was one on there that was just like tied on it, that was gone.
Yeah.
The kids tore it down. I have a feeling that walked by, I'm like, hmm, it's down.
All right, very good. We'll move to village administrator.
Yeah, so I just have a list here. I'll go down as quickly as possible. First of all, you'll notice that you have mic phones and stuff. You, press the button to speak. You can leave it on or you can turn it off. Just know that if you leave it on, it will pick up very minute tones. That being said, village hall is now open. We are open, the lobby taking one person at a time. We are meeting the public in, in what is the village hall chambers and also in the meeting room. We started processing absentee ballots for the August primary. Although there's minimal on the ballot in regards to contests, we do still have 506 requests to process through. So those that had requested for the rest of the year, we do have to continue to process that. In-person absentee voting or in-person voting will start in the office here after the Fourth of July, so that first Monday. I believe that's July 6th. Next item here, Jerry Gray and myself did meet with the town of Berry. Trustee Pomkowski was also there about a municipal boundary agreement. And this is in regards to Brary Road and a portion of North Hillpoint Road to resolve some boundary issues for the upcoming subdivisions that are in queue. Cedar Valley had its second pre-construction meeting. They are hoping to get started on construction soon, within the week or next week. We are still waiting for a letter of credit or authority bond from them. That is an outstanding item at the moment. They have requested an extension for being able to construct past September 15th until the end of the year. That will come to you. You know, we'll bring it through its process. Creek Crossing, right now, has been delayed in the short term as they have had a change with their development team and potentially looking at a different layout for their plot. So more to be determined there. A subcommittee on emergency management did meet. This was to start the conversation on updating the emergency action plan. We'll work through that and, and again, when that's ready to present, we'll bring that to first the Public Safety Committee and that to the village board. In the next few months here, the census will be following up on homes that have not responded. So you may be hearing from residents complaining in regards to that, but they are currently at that stage. People can still complete their online census by going to my2020census.gov. And as part of that, I'm participating in the local redistricting pilot program set to happen after the data comes in from the census. And then lastly here, we do have a couple of meetings coming up. Tomorrow is the joint view board meeting. That's the annual Ted number three review. The members that are on that include President Langfeld and trustee, or Judy Kettleboulder as a, as a resident. Anyone else is free to join them, to join us. If you do, let me know so I can post a possible forum. And then if you've noticed, I do now send out notices for every meeting, just so that you're aware. So the trustees are aware of that. And then we do have a special meeting set up for June 30th. That's to approve the car license for this coming year. That's it.
All right, thank you. Any other staff report?
You have Mike, Accent, Parks and Recreation Director, that would, will provide an update.
Good evening. I just wanted to kind of give everyone an update on where our department's at with COVID and the start of summer. We're trying to get back to normal best we can. We've been putting things in place in regards to, according to the Forward Dane Plan and more or less what they've kind of allowed in regards to programming and the number of kids and the number of capacity within rooms. So we have adopted three new policies, hygiene, hygiene, cleaning policy, and also a protective measures policy, of which we have adapted with all of our staff that are coming in. So to date, we have two programs that are fully running. One of them is our full-day summer camp program, which has 15 kids downstairs and about 12 ki, I'm sorry, 15 kids upstairs and about 12 kids downstairs currently for the camp. So we have a five-day upstairs and a three-day option downstairs today. I'd like to give, take my hat off to our staff. Andrea Fullerton, Katerina Kettleboulder have done an amazing job making sure that these policies are not only in place, but making sure that they're being adhered to. So I'd like to thank them officially with all of you here tonight, as they've done a wonderful job. As staff come in, they ask them questions if they've had any symptoms for COVID, along with the kids as well. And they ask them if they've taken anything to bring their temperature down or if they've come in contact with anybody that has been COVID-19 positive. So once those things are checked off the list with a no, then staff that does come in is able to initial those things to make sure that we're keeping everybody as safe as we can. To date, the, the full-day camp and the karate program are currently running. The karate is outside currently and been very successful to date. Kids really enjoy it. And tomorrow, we start our youth dance program. So youth dance has been moved down to Northwest Dance Senior Services in the back room garage area, where we're able to open up the garage doors to get fresh air in and also be able to space the kids out as needed throughout the program.
Who's the teacher?
For...
Dance.
We have three new teachers for dance this year. We have Maya. Maya and Sydney are both from Middleton. And we have Kayla Stacker here from Cross Plains. So we have three teachers for the program. I love two, two people putting the program on and then one person helping with the distancing. And if anyone needs to use the restroom or facilities, they're able to do so. The other nice thing about moving to Northwest Dance is we always have one full-time rec staff member there. So they're also able to help out when needed with any cleaning and any other issues that we have.
How are your numbers compared to last year? They down quite a bit?
They are, yeah, they're, they're down. However, you know, it's, it's really a mix. The, the full-day camp is doing, doing well at the 15 kids. We find it to be quite more manageable in that regard, which is good. The nice thing is even with those numbers down, we just haven't needed as much staff for that time. So we've been able to cut back there for budget purposes. So as much as we'd like to offer it, as we, we do have people on some waiting lists for full-day camp. But most of the other programs, we've been able to, to go at full strength, so. Yeah, and then lastly, we'll talk a little pool here in a little bit, so.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, we'll move on to general business. Number one, discussion and possible action regarding residential chicken coop license for 3102 Spring Street.
I make a motion. I make a motion, we approve the chicken coop license for Aaron Fessler at 3102 Spring Street.
I say, I say that one.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the residential chicken coop license for 3102 Spring Street. Discussion?
Want to, you want a quick rundown of this? I know we talked about it in public comment. Sent out the notice to all residents within 200 feet of the property. We did have that one come back from Mr. and Ms. Meyer, and she was here to need to speak on that. Otherwise, we did not hear any other objections.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? So moved. All right, number two, discussion and possible action regarding opening of the swimming pool. Mike?
At the last village board meeting, we had discussion in regards to opening the pool, of which you gave me okay to do so. Since that date, we have had one key change in there for opening, as you had all made a motion in regards to having only residents allowed to get a Cross Plains pool membership. I changed that to date as the next morning, we actually received some emails from CivMIC, which was another insurance group for a lot of local municipalities. CivMIC had stated that if communities decided to not offer non-resident memberships to their facilities, that they would lose out on recreational immunity and/or have the possibility of a class action lawsuit as that recreational immunity states that it, your facility and/or program is open to the public. So it doesn't state that it's open to residents. It doesn't state that it's open to non-residents, but it's open to the public. So as received this information, my initial thought was I'd really like to keep the village out of any litigation. So we move forward with, with the option of having resident and non-residents allowed to have that membership. Providing you approved the facility use agreement tonight with the stingrays, it actually played into that card as well, as we had a lot of non-residents that were part of that program as well. And how we've set that up is for, for everybody to have a pool membership so that we're able to track everyone that's in our facility. So that's the one major difference, I guess, in regards to the opening procedures. In front of you is also kind of a broken down timeframe of what the times could include. Monday through Friday, we'd have adult lap swim from 5:00 to 6:45 in the morning, then a cleaning time until 7:00. And then we'd have 11 to, I'm sorry, 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM, we would have it open for private pool time. From 11:00 to 11:45, we'd have a private rental. And from noon until 2:00, we would have open swim. From 2:30 to 4:30, we'd have open swim, and from 5:00 to 7:00, we'd have open swim. But then, once again, allowing for private pool time from 7:30 to 9:45 PM.
So is there any action besides us modifying the motion we made last time? Or is that just done by administrative?
Correct.
So this is more, more information?
More information, I think. Talking to Bill, your motion was to only have it for residents. So if you can modify that motion, providing you're in favor of that, I believe that's what we're looking for tonight.
It would, it would clean it up just because there's a motion.
All right, do I have a motion to open up a pool membership to non-residents?
I will move to open up the swimming pool per the recommendations of staff, which is rescinding a prior motion to open up on July 1st and approving the pool also be open to non-residents.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'm going to have to go back. I was at an individual motion. I don't think we have to rescind the old one. We were just changing. But when we made that motion to close, was that an individual motion? Or is that all with all the elements of the pool? Because I don't want to eliminate that.
It looked like it was a motion that had three conditions.
It had three, you know, it had three conditions, but it was by...
Membership only, limited cash handling, open for village residents, and scheduled out for greater public than private operation were the three conditions.
All right, and you want to rescind all of those or just one?
I am, my motion was to rescind the previous only approved motion.
Yeah.
And approve per the recommendations passed out by Mike today.
And that's what you, hearing the three, you still want to rescind the other two?
The other ones.
The cash one and scheduling more open public time than private.
That's in Mike's proposal today, isn't it, Mike? So that would be included in there. And the conditions are gone. I'm just saying his proposal, his proposal today takes into account all of that and more.
Okay. So as long as everybody knows what they're voting on.
That was, that was my intent.
Okay.
If I had to redo it, that's mine, that was mine.
No, I, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on what the motion was and what we're changing. All right, is there any other discussion? Oh, go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I just want to say that there's a lot of things through, Mike, and your team. I thought you guys did a really good job. The staff is going to strongly, to strongly adhere to the policies and the procedures that you, you made up and also play out some of the what-ifs. What if people say no? What if somebody's sick? And I'm sure you've done that, so. Good job. And a lot of people are excited about it. So village needs a little good news, and thanks for helping to make that happen.
I don't think there was a second.
Yeah, Judy said you did.
Oh, yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? So moved. Okay, number three, discussion and possible approval of a facility use agreement with the Madison Aquatics Club.
All right, so in front of you is the facility use agreement. Been in a lot of discussion with Shane and Janice from Madison Aquatics Club in regards to the use of our facility. How we have it set up is that they would have the facility used on Monday through Friday from 7:00 in the morning until 11:00 AM. With this, we, you know, providing we have the 54 days of rental within that, I'm sorry, it would be a little bit less than that. They did not take any of the weekend usage. But five days a week for roughly seven, seven weeks gives us a, a large amount of revenue. Gives us a, a, a large amount of revenue, uh, that could be added to. The overall budget for the pool. Is there any questions in regards to the agreement?
Yeah, I just, there's, uh, I didn't see it in the agreement. If. Dane County changes things and we are forced to close, there's no penalty on our part. With not, uh, going through August twenty-third with this agreement.
No, either, it, it doesn't state that in the agreement, but both groups are able to. Rescind or take back the agreement at any time. It just has to be done in writing.
Yeah.
So this is just being voted like fifty dollars an hour, right?
It's fifty dollars an hour for six swimmers that are in the water. Uh, the last. That I had read about their club is that with USA Swimming, they're actually allowing two people per lane. Uh, so this would be a little bit of an increase. Uh, it's four dollars and fifty cents per additional swimmer that's in there. Um, they're also allowing a lot of siblings within that. So, uh, we will have a pool manager on staff, uh, that will be there throughout that whole time. Uh, that'll be checking those numbers and also there for any emergency or help needed, uh, within the facility itself.
Any other questions?
Do I have a motion? I motion to approve the facility use agreement with the Madison Aquatics Club. Do I have a second?
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the facility use agreement with Madison Aquatics Club. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same. So moved. All right, number four, discussion and possible action on a facility use agreement with the stingrays swim.
Uh, once again, the facility use agreement is in your packet. Uh, what we've tried to work out would be that the times, obviously, they. At the beginning of this, they were hoping for more time, uh, not really knowing what their numbers would be. So we've kinda had to work backer, backwards, knowing how much time that they have, uh, to allow how many kids that, that are allowed, uh, in the facility or, or in their program. Uh, Stacy Byrne is here tonight. She is the, uh, Cross Plains Stingrays President for this year. So if you have any questions for her directly, you can feel free to do that. I do recommend the approval of this agreement. Uh, this agreement is in place, allowing for, uh, all of their. Participants to actually have a pool membership, and we wouldn't bill the, uh, stingrays himself for the use of that facility.
Are there any questions for either party? Okay, I have Kevin and Bill.
Uh, I just wanna know how different or similar this is than previous year agreements?
It's different this year. It, obviously, time is a little bit different. No meets, you know, or the, uh, big set off. For the most part, everything else is the same. We would normally bill them at the end of the year, so it'd be, they didn't have to have a pool membership, but we would bill them, uh, anywhere from. Depending on what the agreement stated, but twenty to thirty dollars per swimmer, uh, of which would go into our pool revenue.
Thank you.
So, uh, Monday through Friday from eleven fifteen to eleven forty-five AM is swim practice. It seems like a very short window.
Yeah, that's one practice time for.
Does it give, I mean, does it even give them time to get wet, or?
That was a time that they had, uh, requested after the fact, so in addition to what we had offered them at, during the evening slots.
Okay.
I think it does. I, I mean, obviously, they're not getting a lot of people through, and maybe Stacy has a better plan of, of attack, or if Kendra has a plan.
There's, um, a half hour of dry land time, that's so they're conditioning off to the side. That would be in addition to time they spend in the pool. So if there's pool time, it's only a half hour. They're also doing strength training and things like that. Out of the pool, um, while maybe another group is in the pool.
Okay, I mean, I just saw that. It seemed really ir- irregular for small time spots.
It's a one hour, the shortest session. For an age group is one hour. Half an hour of that is dry land time, and the other half is in the pool. We have, uh, only six kids in the pool at a time. Um, for that half hour, so we're hoping that Kendra and the coaching staff will come up with a good plan to do things. Moving while they are in the pool. Families are just thrilled to get their kids, you know.
Sure.
So, they, they, yeah, so it's okay, have a plan.
Good. I just wanna make sure that you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, you know, obviously, we would love the pool all the time, point for stuff, and that, that would never happen. So they're happy. It's good for the sunrise people to do that. They really work hard on getting us, um, uh, the pool time, so we appreciate that. Uh, it, those are tough times, and families are just really appreciative.
Good.
I do have one question, though, what you said about back, um, the aquatic, other aquatic club. We have two families, and this is new to you, and I keep throwing new things on, on people. We have two families, one has twins, and the other one, they're, have two kids, but in the same age group. And I know we had agreed to one kid per lane, but knowing that there's, you're allowing back to do it, would it be possible for us to allow those two families only have both their kids in the same lane?
Yeah, so last Friday, I actually had, uh, contact with Madison Dane County, as they don't have restrictions. All they have is restrictions on is, you know, the number of people allowed in the facility.
Oh.
Uh, they don't actually have restrictions on the number of people. Now, they have recommendations that they got from the Wisconsin Economic Development Corp., which, I'm not sure why they were given those, but. Um, as of right now, they don't have any of those restrictions. So what they've said is come up with your own to date. Um, we have another meeting with them on Friday to have that further discussion on it. Uh, as of right now, the Middleton Pool is only allowing one person in until they hear differently from Dane County that they're able to do so. Um, but I do know of, uh, there pools that are allowing two people, uh, to go to each end of the pool, so, um, we can talk about that.
Okay.
And, and within your plan that you submitted, and which we can make changes to, uh, for your practices, then, uh, we can just, we'll look at that more closely.
And I guess I, cause they've allowed families who gets to be closer than that social distance, so I, I'm not sure why that wouldn't apply.
Yeah.
This one, too.
Right.
They're already, that's up to you guys to know about.
All right, uh, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh. Uh, cross planes, uh, stingrays swimming, uh, agreement?
I will second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the facility use agreement with the stingray swim team. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same. So moved. All right, number five, we're going into, uh, discussion and possible action on ordinance. Zero five dash twenty twenty, repeal and recreate chapter two, uh, meetings. Uh, just for a quick history on this. Uh, if you remember, I guess it was probably in March, uh, that it was brought to our attention that we weren't in compliance with. Chapter two, um, it had not been updated since we had changed the process of the village board. So, um. Uh, trustee Bill and Kevin and I put together a draft, which administrator Phil Chang has reviewed. And the village attorney has viewed, and which you see tonight, was the results of, of that. Um, this is the reason why I have to suspend, um, Robert's rules of order until we get an up-to-date, um. Chapter on running meetings, but it's important for everybody to feel comfortable with this, because this. Is now the ordinance on how we will run meetings, uh, once it's passed. Um, so there are a few changes in the procedural part of it, that, uh, how to make motions and. And how we will be running. So it is, um, a fairly important chapter for this group to clearly understand and feel comfortable with. So I think before we do a motion, I would like, um, if we have any concerns or discussions on any of the sections. Uh, prior to, so we can just try to keep this, um, reasonable with if there needs to be changes. So I will open it up right now, if people have any, uh, comments on, uh, the chapter. Bill?
I can't find it. I know it's in here. I apologize, but, um. There's a section in here that talks about delivering the packet information to the trustees. And it, I think I read that it was a physical delivery rather than, uh, via email, and I apologize.
That would be section two point two zero, special meetings. And I think the reason for that was, um, that not everybody checks their emails every day. And since it's a special meeting, which could be a very short time period of being called, that there would be at least an effort to notify them in person.
Two point zero two.
Oh, is, is that what I said?
You said two point two zero.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm looking, going, it doesn't go.
Okay, it's special, it's under special meetings, I'm sorry.
PDF page sixty-one.
So are we still good with that? I mean, cause that means that, um. They've got, someone from the office has to drive around to deliver this to.
Well, it's, I, I think it's done. I, I, I guess, cause if you look in there, the very last, uh, sentence, it's also puts a, a major restriction on these special meetings. I think what it's there is if you have a special meeting, people don't have it on their calendar. Um, it's not fair to have a meeting without making sure all board members need to it. I would think if people responded like we have on June thirtieth, that everybody's making it, they're not gonna do a, a home delivery. But it's those cases where we have to make sure that board members know of special meeting. I think that's. That's why it's there.
I, it, it makes sense to me, um. But I think there's a better way of doing that. I mean, I think if. I, I don't think that we have, I mean, I think the communication line is really open between the office and the trustees, and I think a phone call. Would be as appropriate as physically delivering something to a trustee.
Okay.
So, yeah, and you, uh, so that's just my thought. I mean, I, it's really up to, because if I'm, if, if I ever get back to the office, well.
Okay, let me just, what if they can't reach you by phone?
Okay, then, then, I mean, that's, I would rather than try by phone, then.
So you would add something to this?
Yeah, as a, that would be the last result.
Bill?
Can I, I'll just put some comment. This is something that, that we did look at with, with Paul, our, our village attorney. And I was all the same thinking in the, the, the times that we are now, uh, communicating, whether by telephone call, email, or, you know, we have various options to get information out. And the response back was that, you know, at the end of the day, you know, in order to get the proper notice to the trustee that this was the language to go with. Now, if, you know, if we reached out by telephone, or, or by chat, or messenger, or what, whatever method it was beforehand. And we were able to reach out to you and get ahold of you to confirm that, then, then we can go away from, from this. But. Um, as far as putting, for the sake of putting language in an ordinance to transpire time, you know. No matter who sits in this position here, this was the language that, that they suggested.
Thank you, Mike. Michael?
Yeah, I have a question in section two dash, or two dot zero one, the regular meetings. It says they'll be held the third Monday of each month. Are we having our meetings on the fourth Monday of each month?
That's what we changed.
Yeah, I know, same one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how that, that got changed. I always said the fourth, when we worked on it.
Okay, um.
It's at third, but I hope somebody corrected it.
Yeah, I thought so. Oh. I had a. Um, I have a, then I have another question in section two dot zero nine, the handling of motions. It says, any board member may make a motion by stating, I move that. Then in seconding a motion, it says, any board member may second a motion by stating, I second the motion. That should probably be excluding the person who made the initial motion, or else the same board member can motion and second. It doesn't rule out the same person doing it twice. Cause it says any board member may second, and any board member may motion, meaning the same one could do both of those. So any other, any other village board member? Or any, any, any board member excluding the one who, from section subsection two. Person who made the initial motion.
Use the word other.
Or other, but.
Yeah, let's do other. That makes, I, that makes sense.
But, but other as opposed to what? You're not specifying the other.
Any other village board member?
Yeah, but it make the initial motion. You're just saying any, any others as opposed to what? It's a completely separate statement. Do you write, you see what I'm saying? It has to spec- it has to specify that it can't be the person who initially made the motion, is what I'm saying. In order for you to exclude.
Okay, so help me, it says no discussion shall be made on a motion until the motion has been seconded by any other board member.
Oh, you're reading there. I was reading in section three.
Oh.
That's where.
Oh, I see. No, we're still in two.
Okay, see, I was just, cause it says any board member may second. That's what I was reading in three. So you're okay. Notice there's something made. On the motion until the motion has been seconded by any other board member.
Right.
Yeah, that would disclude when discussion can be made.
Right.
But then you need to say something, any board member besides the one who made the initial motion may second. The motion, or may second a motion. Right? You get what I'm saying?
I, I'd put something like any board member may second motion unless made the motion.
Right, right. We just need something in there that is.
Yeah, he, yeah. So what I have is any board member. Other than. The member that made the first motion may second a motion by stating, I second.
Yeah, that would work. And then you can correct the one itself, too.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Um, I just have a question under E, where it's number two, where it says make an emotion. It says, okay, the, so the village board has to say, I move that, and then announce what they're moving. So we can't do like so moved anymore? Is that what that's taken away, or can you still do it? Like, if you announce saying, um, open up the pool, you're looking for motion, open up the pool, can people still say so moved? No?
I.
Or do you have to say?
I think it should be clear. I really do.
So you have to say what it does?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, we need to, I think we should.
Okay, and, and then, so then we get the second motion, and then we don't talk about it till then, unless, and if we don't get a second motion, we can't talk about anything, right?
Right, the motion dies if it doesn't get seconded.
And then for calling the question, can, like, so, I'm just asking, not telling. So if there's a conversation going on for ten minutes, a half minute or two hours. We can call the question, and then they'll make them, they'll make the vote? Or can we still do that? We used to be able to call.
No, what, what this is saying basically is, just like we did tonight, someone makes a motion, someone seconds it, I state that we have a motion in a second. And now we're opening it up for discussion.
But you can, but you, but eh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I know what you're gonna say, but go ahead.
So, so if that deliberation gets either off track, or if it gets too long and deliberate, and there's no new information coming in. A trustee and the village president have to approve that, says, I call the motion, village president says, I agree, calls the motion. If he doesn't agree, the discussion keeps going.
Correct. That is correct. But I think number four here, that, that's just for the basic everyday discussion, but.
Right.
Bill's correct on, at some point, you can shut off the discussion.
You wanna take mine now, Jay?
Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
All right. I got a list, some of them regarding.
All right, I got a list, someone regarding answers, that's good. Two point oh two, uh last sentence, the one you just mentioned, actually. Unless all trustees are in attendance, no business shall be transacted at a special meeting except for the purpose stated in the notice.
Yep.
Isn't that every meeting?
No, no, what they're saying is, for example, let's take the June thirtieth meeting, that's a special meeting, right? We are meeting to approve liquor licenses, right? Now, let's say, three days before, I say, well, put this on the agenda also, okay? It's still going to get notice and stuff, but it may not hit where everybody's been notified. So if you get to the meeting, and there isn't seven here, you can only deal with the, with the topic that brought the special meeting in. And what this does, the reason I'm guessing it's there, it's not something we, it's always been there, is that they didn't want to call a special meeting for this, and then to sneak other things in, when you know certain people can't make it. So that's, I, I'm comfortable with taking it off and on, but I just want to tell you, that's my interpretation of it, is if you call a special meeting for liquor licenses, that's what we're going to vote on. If people add to it, and we don't have uh seven people here, then you can't act on.
Right, I understand that, that makes sense, because.
It's not a regular meeting.
Okay, I'm good with that one, I move on down.
No.
Second, two oh five, or.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, um all regular, special, wait, I'm sorry, it's got moved on me, got moved down. I'm sorry, quorum two oh four. One half or more of members of the village board, now, the village president is considered a member of the village board, so that's seven, shall constitute a quorum. So that's different than what was in the initial one, where it said, the president plus at least three board members.
Right, correct.
So, okay, I just want to make sure that's clear, and I just want to make sure everybody here then is clear that we all know the village president is on the village board, okay?
Yeah, and that's a good, I'm glad you brought that up. That would mean if I couldn't make the meeting, and you had four, you wouldn't be able to do anything. We have people second in command, and then you gotta be able to continue to run if I'm not here. So we made it to where you need four members, because I'm a voting member just like everybody else.
Um, second, two point oh six, agendas, Bill, I know I said, Jay, I know I said you something on this.
I've read that about six times.
I know, it was a good read, wasn't it? Um, yeah, and I'm just curious, so, we can, it sounds like we can set our own way to set agendas, that is possible. But there is no state mandated or way that is required that we set agendas. And so, um I guess what I'm wondering here, and what I had made initially, the question I made initially to Jay, was to say that any board member could put something on there, uh on the agenda. Since then, we've attached, we've put the future agenda topics on the agenda, so we were able to cover them there. But I guess I'm wondering what everybody else thinks about putting agenda items on the agenda.
Why don't we do a little history? I mean, it's an article that was written by the attorney that works for the municipality. And what it is, is Kevin is saying, there is no state statute that actually talks about authority for agendas, okay? So there is no state statute that you have to follow. And then, on the other hand, there's nothing in Robert's Rules of Order that also tells you how to do an agenda. So it's kind of open up. And what this article that he's referring to, uh was basically, can the proceeding officer build the agenda by themselves? Which would be, in our case, the village president, in cities, it would be the mayor. So you have, you have one statute that basically gives the authority of the proceeding officer to run the meeting, having control, but the words in there has at and when. So the attorneys interpret that as present, as when we're here at this meeting, their, this attorney's opinion doesn't say that it gives you authority for future, okay? So you have that. But then you have another statute, that's the open meetings law, which requires the proceeding officer to notice the meeting. So they're the ones that put the agenda out there for the public to know what's going to be speaking, so some interpret that, they then have, it's hard to notice a topic if you don't know what the topic is. So they, the interpretation is that the proceeding officer then sets the agenda. Then you have the other, because we are a democracy where you're elected by the voters, you cannot have someone that doesn't give the representatives of the voters an opportunity to discuss topics. So that's where, those are the three things that it is balancing. Now, unfortunately, you read through this six-page uh legal document that has all this history, and then you hope that they come up with a good conclusion. It's a little paragraph that says, you can do an ordinance, but make sure you don't violate any of the laws. So I think what we're trying to do on most of these is, you need to have some control of the agenda, otherwise you have chaos if you don't have control of the agenda. But then again, you want everybody to have a fair input on what goes on to the agenda. So we tried to balance all of these with this section here, which basically, Bill and I do the agenda, but you guys are able, every meeting, to put what you want. As you noticed with the last two meetings, a lot of these we referred back to committee, because that's where they should start, and then they work their way up. Other ones we've put on the agenda, but it, it still gives some control that Bill and I can balance the, the agendas and the items for, for meeting. So that's kind of what it is, but yeah, I'm open to um suggestions on this, but I think this is written pretty well, and I think it gives everybody a lot of issues. I, I would be hesitant to support anything that allows everything to go in, because then we just have a lot of items on the agenda, that potentially, we can move off to committees, so that's my two cents. Bill?
Thank you. So, uh, I am pretty well, I'm truly actually happy to see this paragraph, I thought it was pretty good. Uh, the only thing that I would, I would, um, if it's going to go, I'm just kind of thinking, just thinking, not, I don't want to change anything in here, right? Is that if, if the village president then refers something to a committee or commission or future board meeting, that, that village president notify the village board member and saying, hey, this is what I'm going to be doing, when you're saying this over to committee, that way you have some dialogue prior to, so if for some reason, you know, I really want something to be on the board and not to go to committee, I want to have that discussion with you, so, so we can have, you know, that discussion. So, uh, that's really all, that's the only thing I really wanted to say about this paragraph, other than I, I liked it.
And when, you know, when you say that for like, the future items, that's kind of where it comes back to where Kevin said, you're asking us at each meeting if there's anything, so that counts, we don't have to do it in writing, but I say, okay. But you say that's what you want.
All right, so, okay, I would, now I'm just gonna throw this out there in whole entire different ways. So I understand that you want some way to limit the number of things that get on an agenda, but the way that this is read, um, there'll be a standing item to the board for agenda for trustees to request the future agenda item. This still gives the power to the president and the village administrator to completely keep something off an agenda, as they could always be continually pushing it out to a future board meeting, and never have it actually show up on an agenda, with the statement that the, for village president shall have the authority to refer the item to committee, commission, or a future board meeting. You could continually push it out to a future meeting if you wanted to.
That's not absolutely correct. If you go back to two point zero two, if you and another trustee can actually call a meeting to discuss that.
Okay.
There's checks and balances here.
All right, that's fair enough, we're working through these. Yeah, okay, well, that is a check on that system. Um, the question is, do we want to be, I mean, trustees generally don't flood meetings with, uh, you know, agenda requests. I mean, we haven't had a whole ton, and is somebody going to be annoyingly about putting ten thousand things on an agenda? Basically saying that you could just open this up to allow all trustees to be able to put items on an agenda. Or unless you feel that that's too.
Well, I'm going to respond, because I guess I'm the one that has to deal with that. I, I don't think you can find any organization that have regular meetings that allow anybody to put anything on any, any agenda.
Well, we're not.
I think there needs to be some control on having a process. So I'm not worried about a million agenda items coming in, but I think there needs to be a process of when they come up to the board and what takes priority. That's, that's where I'm coming from, and it's not, this is not a unique or progressive thing, almost everybody has a process. If you've been on any board, you always have an opportunity to ask for things to be on a future agenda, but nobody just can get to the meeting and start putting items on an agenda. I mean, I don't, so to me, I, I think this is in line with what everybody else has, and you're absolutely right, but that is one of the, the responsibilities of the, of the proceeding officers, to have well-run, organized, well-planned-out meetings. And it's difficult if everybody is throwing things in whenever they can, whenever they want. Bill?
So just to make a point on that, uh, back when we had the mountain bike trail over on the other side of town, uh, that was actually referred to parking wreck, parking wreck actually voted it down, and the, uh, the club then came back to the village board and asked for it to be on the agenda, it went through, went through, I think, uh, the village president at that time, which then did bring it back onto the agenda for the village board, rather than send it back to committee because it was already there, it came back to the board and, and took care of it then at the village board level, where then it got uh, voted for, or got passed by the village board at that time. So there is times where I can understand the village president wants to send things to the committee or, or commission, because that's their job, uh, and gets rid of all of the noise that comes, puts in place prior to it coming to the village board. So, uh, but if it can't make it past that, I think the public still has some means of getting it here to the village board through this process.
All right, can I just read, Judy, myself and Judy, and I think, Michael, if you read the very, the second to last sentence, it's basically saying that your item is going to go somewhere, it's just not necessarily that next meeting.
Right.
So it's not like it can be blown away, it's, it's just that there needs to be some control of when and how it's managed, so.
Which, which I agree, uh, that sentence, if you read it in the context of the board member requesting the item to be, you know, put on there, I was just reading it in isolation as I was reading the whole thing together, it made much more sense that, that it wouldn't be blown away, as I was making that statement. I was taking it individually as I was separating, but, and with your, with the two oh two of two trustees come on, there's definitely that check there, which is very agreeable.
And Judy, then back to you.
I was just thinking, good example, also, is planning and zoning, I mean, that's why, like, if you don't get something approved there, they need to come back to the board, and you need to ask, I think that's good. But I'm gonna confess that I don't know what the old, or all the, all look like, so as far as changes, when you say there's changes on here, and I've been reading it, reading it the last couple of days, are there some major changes? Or like, when you say, like, what do you think?
Okay, a major change is agenda. That was never covered in uh chapter two, it had always been basically the administrator and the president, but it's never been written down anywhere, so I felt it was needed, I knew it was going to be a difficult one to get through, but I think we need to be transparent on, on that. That is a major change, and then when you go down to uh the procedure part of it, that's a major change, we didn't really, it was much more open at that time, really didn't detail things. So those, to me, um, were the, the major things. After, like, the voting and Robert's rules and ordinance, I don't think that was really touched at all. Uh, there was some modifications to the first couple paragraphs, because it was still under the old um committee of the whole.
Oh.
Yeah, so it talked about meeting the first, and that's maybe where the third, I think you guys met the first and third Mondays, one was a committee of the whole, so that was all, all that committee of the whole stuff was in here. Um, on the, I also gave the special meetings, I gave trustees a little bit more uh power in that one.
Well, actually, you cleaned out handling the motion.
Yeah, okay.
That was, that was actually quite.
Yeah, but I mean, it's changed, that's a major change.
Right.
Yeah. So those, I would think the agenda and the procedure are probably the two, what I would consider major changes. Back to you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And regarding agenda, um, the special meeting, I didn't understand how that would work, and that's a good check, so thank you for that. Uh, section two point zero nine, sub E, sub five, considering, consideration of motion, I guess, sub E, sub five, sub I, one, member discuss, members discuss motion per policy. What policy is that, that it's referring to?
I'm guessing this policy, and we don't talk about that in this policy, discussion of the motion.
Yeah, we do. I don't think we do. Uh, maybe under Robert's rules, it's recognized, voting, we talk about.
No, stating the question, you know, states a motion, and indicates that it's open to discussion.
Well, I, yeah, I guess it's open to discussion, but members discuss motion per policy. Oh, so you're, because where I was going with this is, I, yeah, I'll be more specific here. When we talk about it, uh, Robert's rule says, each person gets to talk once, right? And then, and we're, we're, we're getting off that, and I'm okay with that, but when does too much become too much? Is it once through, twice through, three times? So we don't have anything really trying to delve this in to bring us tight on discussion. And so without that one time per person, or some other rule, how can we put our arms around that? And that's where I don't think we have any discussion policy. And that's what Bill was kind of trying to bring up early on, and I, you know, I guess we're still small enough, and the issues we have time to discuss. I just worry, if we get too much, we lose some of that, and I guess it falls on the village president to say, I think we've gone far enough on it. I, you know, I hate to say, everybody gets to talk twice, and if there's two people that are very knowledgeable, we lose something. I think when you put restraints like that, you can lose something, and I'm not, I think there's times that we draft, and I will try to keep people in line, that's kind of my position to do that, but I think it's very difficult to write a policy, you know, at this level, that we want that restriction, because I don't want to be checking, okay, Judy's done one, okay, Kevin's done, oh, now Judy said, yeah, okay, now, you know, Judy, you're done, you can't say it. I mean, I just don't really want to get to that point. Um, I think, you know, I hear what you're saying, I clearly hear what you're saying, I'm just, I just don't know if that is a problem that we have right now. Bill?
So, the idea behind this, this, as a, as a foundation, is to keep the meetings succinct and on track, right? And that's your job.
Yeah.
That's why you get paid the big bucks compared to us. Right? So, so that is your job, and um you, you have to make sure we don't get off track, you know, and if we do get off track, you bring us right back on track. If we're saying the same things over and over again, stop that discussion. If we're saying the same things over and over again, stop that discussion right there and then. That's on you. Like we did with the ATBs, we went through that piece by piece by piece by piece and we all, on the same motion, we, we all talked several times, right? That's, so that's your job as the village president or the village president's job, to be able to moderate that and to keep us on track and to keep the meetings as short as possible. So that's my two cents.
Judy?
And where it says, number 2 under 5, where it says, puts the question, you started, I used to just call the question, but now we say, so that's up to anybody here, we can all say, puts the question, right? So anyone who wants to call the question.
You can, but I, I dig it out. There's also a legal thing on that. You can do that, but you're not allowed to do it if you shut everybody out. So you can't give your spiel and then say, I put it in question before me.
Right.
People have to have, you have, it's not for sure, an absolute, once someone says it, discussion has to have. There's still the fairness that other people get to.
Right.
You're correct.
If they think.
But everybody can do that, yeah.
If it goes too long, but then you still have to approve it. So any board member can say, like he says, if the meeting gets to be on the same topic, if any one of us wants to say, I puts the question, you still have to approve it though. Okay, perfect.
Actually, that was my next question, thank you. To put the question, if, let's say, I say, let's put this question. And doesn't it go to vote amongst the board members to put the question? It is not even.
I'll have to, I think, I thought it was the officer that either agrees or, and I think there's only certain time. I'd have to look that up, the Roberts rule again, but generally, I know we, someone did that once, one of our meetings. I don't know where it was. And I agree with that and we did that. I don't know if you have to vote or not. I'll have to look that up.
If we could look that up, that would be helpful. That was my only ever point on that.
And of course, I took the book out of my backpack.
I have to look right here.
Do you?
Yeah, but the thing is, we should gotta be careful, is I'll have to dig it up. There's an article that, a legal article, article that says, does, when someone does that, does that end the discussion? And the answer is no, you have to give everybody an option.
Sure.
Yeah, so there's some rules to it, I just don't remember what all the rules are. I can clearly look that up, that we can have that discussion. And I'm done.
Michael? So just real quick then on that members discuss motion per policy, are we getting rid of that per policy idea? Is this members discussion motion? Since the policy is really the presiding officer decides when we're gonna vote on it?
No, I think what this is, is talking about is when you have your discussion, you gotta follow whatever your rules are. And that is the above.
Oh.
And the rule, you know, part of it, and I guess we don't really write it down, but you read Roberts rules of order, one of the big things is like, we're doing, you have to raise your hand. So the discussion is not a free for all, you know, Kevin, I'll say Kevin, then Bill, then Michael. That's what they're talking about.
Okay.
How do you run that discussion?
And then inside of here, it even gives you the option to call on other people, not just board members.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely, okay.
I guess, look, I guess I wasn't done. I, on this one, I would say that I ask that maybe if we adopt something that's similar to what's here, we just watch ourselves the next few meetings and see where that may have changed. And it's not that big a deal if we go back in here and tweak this in a few months. I really don't think so, because I think that that, there are times where, where discussion gets long. First of all, I think everybody, and that's in Roberts rules too, has a chance. So every officer should have a chance to talk and you've always been good about giving that out, okay? The other part of it is everybody has, if you do two rounds or multiple rounds, everybody has a chance before the, another person talks a second time. And I think that there's something positive to be said about that. And then if we wanted to spell some of this out so it's just cleaner for us, even if it's restating something in Roberts rules, just a little bit cleaner for us in here, I think that's okay. And this is one of the areas where I personally would, would see that as useful, that everybody gets to say something once first before anybody can talk a second time. That would be my recommendation to start on here. I would get rid of per policy and that that would just be members discuss motion. Each officer gets a chance to say something before you, once before you offer second round of comments. And then it can be a little bit more free for all after that.
Yeah, as long as, I'm sorry. Well, the nice thing about Roberts rules order is if you go through it, it actually gives you the possibility and freedom to be able to be pretty much whatever you want. You know, if we're 435 members of a board like the Congress, you know, they want that strict and they want that orderly, we're still. So, you know, but I mean, I'm fine with that as far as, you know, saying everyone has an opportunity, but that's something that you have to manage them.
Right, and that's the whole thing. That's with these, we want to use what is necessary to run a good meeting, but you don't wanna stop good discussion. And like, you're right, Congress, they have much stricter rules because it's so much bigger body yet. Michael, you had something?
Yeah, I was gonna agree with Kevin in that is that if we include just small pieces of Roberts rule of order, so that if somebody goes in here and reads this, they get the general idea of what's going on without having to have a whole entire fact of Roberts rule of order or how the meeting is gonna function, this provides a.
This is what, that's, this is what it is and some of this is taken right out of the book.
Right, and that's, and that's great, that's what.
Right, because I tried to make it where it was workable, but simple. We don't want to go and do the whole 480 pages of motions and stuff like that. But again, we wanna make sure there's some type of order. So that was the intent that the three of us have. I think, like I said, I think there's some good suggestions here and I'm with Kevin. Let's give it a try, see what happens for, you know, three months, three meetings and we can always make adjustments.
Yeah, and then we get to reread it and maybe we get something.
Well, you gotta learn how to do, yeah, I'm probably not, yeah.
We need a motion amendments.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, this is the ordinance. And that's what makes it a little tricky. I don't know if you can handle it, any new ordinance or not, but this becomes an ordinance, so we have to go through this process again to make changes, but I don't think it's a big deal.
So, go ahead.
I just wanna clarify, Eric, before you take the vote on this. So there's been some recommend, recommended changes to the draft.
Okay.
So just wanna clarify, when you do make the motion, whether it's with amendments, this discussed or if you wanna see another draft.
Do you wanna table it till he cleans it up?
That is gonna be, I'm gonna leave that out to you, just so you know. I will be suspending Roberts rule until this gets passed, so, you know, we've criticized a little bit about that, but I, I'm comfortable as long as this stays on the front and we do it. So if you want, you know, to make the change and take a look at it, I'm fine with that. I don't have a problem with that. I just wanna let you know that that's the side of the bill.
So I'm, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion to pass ordinance number 05-2020 as it's written and then come back to it in three months with any update or changes. No, forget that, I'm just gonna make, make a motion to, to recommend we pass ordinance number 05-2020, period.
Do I have a second? And I'll have a second till motion dies.
Okay.
Do I have another motion out there?
I would move to table this ordinance until the next board meeting, when we see it in its complete form.
All right, we don't really need a motion on that, okay. I guess we should.
For a table?
Yeah, 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 so we're not gonna, we're gonna refer, okay. We're gonna, I have a motion, do I have to refer this?
Second July meeting. Second.
I have a second, so I have a motion and a second to re, to refer this chapter or this ordinance 05-2020, repeal and recreate chapter two meetings to July.
I said to the next board meeting?
Oh.
Oh, so I just wanted to make clear, we have a board meeting next week. A special board meeting. I know, it's just. We're putting it to the test.
Yeah, this is a good tell.
Okay.
Now.
Now that's not seven people, seven trustees there.
Then we can, oh, no, because, no, we're just, this is not in play. Yeah, you're right, so we can go ahead, yeah.
Can, can we do that? That's, that was my, I'm asking the question. That's why I specifically said the next board meeting.
Okay, very good, I wasn't thinking that.
That's a good question, so we can add this to a special meeting then?
I don't know.
Yeah, you can add this, because this, here's.
But not posted yet, but it's.
No, you can post it, but here's where this would come into play. If this had been passed, right, under this, we called a special meeting for the license, right? So that can be voted on, even if we only have four. This would not be able to be voted on unless we get it set. But no, not, that's if this was it, but it's not.
Okay.
So we're good, we are good.
Well, so I say, even though he said that, if we're gonna try to adopt this as an ordinance, why don't we pretend that it is one?
Well, you can defend all you want.
Hi, Anders.
I would just get it.
Yeah, I hear very few changes. And, yeah, all right, so we have that motion to have that, to bring it back to the, at the June period. Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Say.
It would just say aye.
Well, you said nay.
Aye, aye, okay, so it's basically five to one. All right, thank you. All right, here we go, the next ordinance. Discussion and possible, discussion and possible action on ordinance 06-2020, repeal and recreate section 21.09, sub A, sub B, concerning animal control.
Let me go ahead on this one?
Well, why don't you brief it and did you take notes of the, because there was public comment on this?
Yeah, I did. So it was an item that was brought forth under future agenda item at a previous meeting in regards to, well, pretty much dogs running at large and potential safety risks to that. It was referred to then the public safety committee. The public safety committee did take it up and at that meeting recommended that the village board adopt an ordinance, basically a leash ordinance, controlling the animal or controlling the dog. And so when it went to the village attorney, we took a look at what was currently in our ordinance and changed that to make it apply to not only dogs, but in order to make it work for the ordinance, also added domestic animals, chicken or livestock to it. This is the first iteration that we wanted to bring to you. Trustee Xander was at that meeting, she is chair of that committee. And then we also have police chief Tony Reska on the, on the chat here or on the webex here. And then I also have the comments, I can read that before discussion. So the comments here was to consider, consideration of and inclusion of language relating to electronic shock or IE shock collars, that, and whether they are circumstances where they may be treated as the equivalent of a physical lease. Two, consideration of whether a six-foot leash requirement on any public property may be overly restrictive. The language aspirin may become screwed in such a manner that retractable dog lease of any length greater than six feet is in a mess mode. And there is not clarification, yeah, it was the intent of the public safety committee. And then third, consideration of higher fines for dog owners that do not pick up after their animals.
Okay. Let's just do somewhat of the discussion before we pass this, because I don't wanna do a lot of changes to an ordinance. So the E collars, I guess, I'm not, I wanna make sure that I understand. When I hear electronic collar, I'm hearing what a lot of people use for hunting dogs and keeping them enclosed versus electronic collar that dogs wear when you have electric fence. So we're not talking about the electric fence, when they can run around someone's yard, their own yard, it's as free as they want, right? It's, because it's no different than a fence, if it's electronic fence.
Correct, we're talking only in public space.
Right, right, so I want, so I guess I can't support one who is familiar with electric collars. I'm not sure that's basically allowing your dog without a leash. And every time it gets six feet and that'll be a visual thing, you'd have to zap the dog, you know, to know. I'm not really sure on that one. I guess I would, unless I'm misunderstanding, there's someone knows some technology out there that you can set a electronic collar that when the dog gets six feet, it warns or something the dog. I don't, I think. Kevin?
Yeah, I'm not, I would not include the electronic collars in here at all. Let's speak two things, one is they have problems, you know? I'm sure a regular leash will break too, but you know, batteries run out, it don't quite work, button doesn't work, whatever, you don't see it. But even more so, it's not just for the dog and the person handling the dog, it's for other people. And they don't know, they can't see this collar, this leash, they don't understand that this dog may be safe or maybe under control. So it's the knowledge of somebody else walking by and knowing the dog's.
All right, is everybody kinda comfortable with, with that one? So then the next one is the language with the six foot in length. So I guess the question, it is, the wording of it is six feet in length or shorter. So what was the group, did you talk about those leashes that, you know, are retractable?
Retractable? We did not talk about. We did not talk about the retractable leashes. We were just the six-foot leash, just because the retractable ones, the odds of them breaking if your dog goes, well, I should say we kind of talked about it and preferred that you'd not use the retractable.
So the question is, if you had a retractable and you had it set at six foot and you just, that's what you're using, are you within ordinance? Or would, could you be in violation of it?
Well, I would say if it's six foot, it wouldn't matter what it would be on, you know what I mean? Whether it's retractable or not, that wasn't a huge.
So I, I have a border collie who's about 75 pounds, a big border collie, he's really strong and he's on a retractable leash. I am going to get fined every single day because I walk Xander Park on a retractable leash. Now, my dog's on a leash, he's under control the entire time. He actually even have pinch collar on him because if he starts, if he sees another dog, he may get excited, whatever, and I can control him that way. I, I think having a six-foot leash in a public park is way too restrictive. I think if he's on a leash and he's under control, and your dog's under control, I think that is, in my opinion, that may, that would be sufficient for animal control and public area.
So you don't think there should be any limit on the length? So like when I trained pointers, we had 35-foot lead lines that we used so that I could walk my dog with 35.
My retract, I mean, you buy, you buy a consumer, normal consumer retractable leash, not one that's meant for hunting, but one that's meant for walking your dog, I think they're 15 feet. So, you know, I bring my dog into the, into the creek. I'm not gonna go into the creek and on a six-foot leash, he's not gonna go into the creek either, but he likes to go into the creek and sit there and waddle for a little bit, right? I can have him on a retractable leash, go into the creek, bring him back out again.
So what length do you think that?
15 feet.
Okay, Kevin, Michael?
Yeah, I was trying to find out, there's a current ordinance for Xander Community Nature Park. Can you look that up, Bill, do you know what that is? That has, I believe has a leash length, right?
So, Bill? I don't, I don't think it does.
It just said a leash.
Just a, just a dog's leash.
Okay. If you look at the other ordinances from other communities, there are those parts, they almost all say six or eight. There's another one, six or eight foot leashes. I mean, I won't get into the, the negative parts of training with the retractable leash, we'll forget that for now, but just the other part of it is so many times I see those things get yanked out because the dog gets bull run and they're yanked out of their hands and then they break. I am not a big fan, I couldn't. I am not a big fan. I I couldn't. I six is what I would go with, but I would be willing to go up to eight only because. With your arm, two feet and another eight feet, there also that dog is ten feet away from you. And, you know, that's that and that could reach into a creek, I guess, but it also could reach a lot more. And I can show you dirty pants that I got from a dog that was on a retractable leash just a couple of weeks ago at Xander Park. So. Uh, I'm I'm a big fan of keeping it more uh some sort of restriction, say, sorry.
So I did take my comment back. There is some language here.
So Bill, you are, you should be getting fined daily. All right, I'm gonna bring this in now. Michael's next in the queue.
Um, I was going to agree with Bill's statement is that a lot of people use the fifteen feet retractable leashes in town. And so now. Those would all be not able to be used. I understand your concern.
Lock a minute.
Yeah, but then how do you go about enforcement if he comes over and says, oh, this says fifteen feet, but they're like, but it's locked in at six and that's fine? I mean, I'm just curious, you know?
Because there's always discretion.
I apologize. If they're sixteen feet. I'm sorry.
I like it. I guess I'm in the Gina walks the dog all the time and we have whatever the standard is, six feet probably, five feet. I I guess when you go to fifteen, sixteen, that seems like you could be clear across like a walkway and. That just seems like a long ways away.
You can, but but the idea is to have your dog under control, right? And when people come by, you retract them in and you bring them to six feet or five feet. I actually bring them to about four feet. I bring them right next to me. So I don't keep them out at fifteen feet when someone's coming by or another dog's coming by. I have them under control so that person feels safe. When they're walking by me at Xander Park or on Bourbon or on Main Street. I think it's, I think the the idea behind this is so your dog is under control, people are safe, they feel safe because some people are terrified of dogs.
Right.
Totally get that. But and, you know, if your dog is at sixteen feet on a leash. And someone's around, he may not be under control, even on a sixteen foot leash. So the idea is to have him under control. And I don't think having a leash limit up to six feet necessarily dictates that that dog's under control. I can say the same thing about a leash breaking that I can't about a retractable breaking. I I don't think you can use that argument.
Well, I think the only argument is that you're you're correct, but at fifteen, from one to fifteen, you don't have the dog under control. Versus from one to six, you don't have the dog under, right? When the dog's on the leash, the the play and the you don't have control of the dog when they have that kind of distance. So.
You do. Well, you do.
If you retract it, but I guess what I'm saying is the length of the leash to me is the part that you have control of the dog. Anything within that, then the dog can move in any direction. So I have Michael then Lori. I was just gonna say with the retractables, you can hit the button and stop how far.
It could lock.
It was like it locks into a position. That's just what I was saying. All right.
Um, I think that just having uh. That the dog has to be on a leash. Whatever type of leash, I think that would be a too much. Right now to discuss that. And perhaps we can say that the dog has to be on a leash. And that, you know, we see how this goes. And if. Dog, if owners still cannot control their dog, then we would have to make a circuit or ordinance.
I'm gonna go then Judy. So this came up because people didn't have their dogs on leashes? Or people felt that there were too many dogs on leashes that weren't controlled? I mean, I'm trying.
Both. You can walk around any neighborhood here and with my dog, you've been attacked, I don't know how many times. And people just. The new thing is not to have your dog on leash and you train them to stay by you, but that only works so well. Yeah. My dog's only had the retractable ones, so that'd be fine too, but she doesn't want much anyways. But I do like the retractable because I think if you bring your hand closer to me, like I wind that sucker up and she's right next to it. So I like being able to be in control. I feel like I'm more controlled with retractable than I do with one of those other ones when I'm trying to grab. So I only use retractable and that's it.
All right, but I think what I think what the discussion is, is the length.
Oh, right.
Because if, you know, if we're saying retractable, I don't really care what the leash is, but I think there needs to be a number. Because if you just say whatever your leash is, I'm telling you, there's some long leashes out there for training purposes.
I do see a lot in the creek. I do see a lot of dogs in the creek. They love it.
They do.
They do. And I think six would be too short.
My dog. All right. I have Bill and Kevin and then myself.
We have a comment from Chief Reska.
All right.
Go ahead, Tony.
Okay, I just wanted to add a couple of comments. One was with regarding to the length of the leash. I think we were. We were trying to stay consistent with the park ordinance. That's why there is some language in there with regards to length of leash and and that the dog be attached to a, you know, basically a person holding on to the end of the leash. I think that's kind of where that came from. Um, and then the other topic with regards to public safety. Within the last six weeks, we've had four documented dog attacks on people and other animals. Where we've actually had to put. Put our put into place the ordinance and require people to quarantine their dogs. These are not just the. You know, the dogs running up to people. These are actually dog bites, things like that. So I think it, that's why it made it to public safety is. We had more people walking, more people, more dogs out, out and about, and that's kind of where this came from.
Okay, I just I just got a question on that. Well, so those those are dog texts. My my dog's been attacked, just like Lori says as well. Those dogs, were they on leash or were they off leash?
A couple of them were came out of a home, so they were off leash in the running around and attack dogs. The other one was on a leash. And and they were just passing by and it was it was one of those things. So it it varies.
And was it? So does at that point, but even having them on a six foot leash?
No, that doesn't matter if it came out of a hole. So I have Kevin, myself.
Yeah, I'm just gonna um support moving it up to eight feet max. And no longer. And anybody with retractable leash can simply lock it in at that six or eight foot level or shorter. That's that's how it would be determined. My dog has a six foot leash. That's no problem getting into the water.
And I'll uh, my only, I I'm comfortable with eight feet, I guess, between six and eight. But I'm concerned that we have two different standards that where, because the one said six foot.
Parks, parks.
Yeah, so now someone has to adjust. I I that that doesn't make sense to me.
We we would just have to change this to park rule. I mean, this would, this ordinance would override that or wouldn't it just change?
Well, we'd have to change that.
We have to change that. Okay. Well.
Yeah, no, no, we can.
Regardless of that.
Yeah.
Whatever we do here, we have to either match that or we have to change.
Right. And I think that's where the six foot came because it matches what we already have. Go ahead, Lori.
Um, so I'm thinking. Like Bill wants his dog to be able to be on the retractable and let him go into the water. Like the creek or something like that. To me, that's. Different than you're out walking your dog, but is it different? Is that something? No, it should not.
I just, I think it's hard for law enforcement to enforce. So one person is letting them go sixteen feet to get into the creek. Well, what about the next one who wants them to go into the bushes or the sixteen feet into the wood? You know, I. It's hard to write something like that. I think we have to come up with a length. Bill?
I just think the problem is I see so many, not so many, I do see dogs off leash over at Xander Park Conservancy, which is actually not a park, but it's a conservancy area, I think. Um, but I think the idea is to get dogs on a leash and have that documented, right? And I either, there are a lot of people that use retractable leashes in this village. And I I I. I strongly opposed to having a six or eight push foot leash that is not retractable in in this lane. But I'm just saying.
No, no, and I'm okay. I don't care the style of the the leash. The question is the length of it. So if you want to have a retractable that goes sixteen feet. But if the rule is eight feet, you can set it at eight feet and it works just as well. It's not like you ought to buy another one. If that's what I'm hearing, I don't have a problem with not banning retractable. The question is, to me, I think sixteen feet is a long distance for a dog to be from an owner. And I think there is responsible people that like yourself that withdraws them into four to six feet. But I think there's other people that say I can do it sixteen feet, so there's going to be sixteen feet down there and people are going to be jumping over cables and stuff because of the dogs. They're wrapping around sixteen feet to me is a long distance, you know, for walking a dog. That that's just me personally. So I don't think I'm looking to get rid of your retractable. I'm looking at what is a reasonable distance when you're walking in a urban setting to have your dog. Bill?
I just want to mention that I don't believe that the ordinance mentions retractable or non retractable.
No, but it does say leash at six feet in length or shorter. So retractable could is a longer. But you don't have to use it all. But that's, I I I can see why some people were interpreting that. Michael?
So then I bring up the question that says to secure their animal on a leash, six feet in length or shorter and maintain animals under control. And maintain animals under control, meaning you can still have a sixteen foot leash, but if they're out that far, people are jumping over. Wires and coils, then the animal is not under control because it's in, it's getting in other people's way. It would be in violation of the under control section of that ordinance. You can still allow.
No, because it's it has.
If it was or, that would be a different.
No, or if it and.
It says and, so you have to have both.
Yes.
Right. So he's saying get, so.
No, go ahead. Go ahead. Say your point.
So, right, so if so, if my dog is out by by twelve feet of a line, right, of a leash, right, and I have him under control. And we don't have that restriction of eight feet or six feet or whatever the case might be, then. You know, if my dog's in control, he's in control. But another owner's dog is in control. They're in control. I I just have a super hard time saying. People that have a retractable leash can't let their dogs go beyond six or eight feet, especially like in a conservancy area or Xander Park where you're not there all the time, but. I'm done. I'm done with that.
Well, no, no, it's. I mean, that's why we're having this discussion. Kevin?
A little math, a sixteen foot leash would have seven times the reach of a six foot leash. Seven times the area. So that's where you start getting a bunch of people on sixteen foot leashes. You're taking up a whole lot more area than you are with a dog on a six foot leash. They have more reach. Uh, two dogs that are obviously thirty two plus, you know, forty feet apart couldn't reach each other across the road on two retractable leashes. And still be within the ordinance.
But not if you maintain.
Well, yeah, then the question becomes, were they under control by seeing the other dog with the owner controlling them then?
Well, I think. I guess we're gonna. Michael?
Basically, I guess it's whether or not we're going to say whether or not an owner is going to control the dog or whether or not we're going to allow the length of the leash to be the defining factor that controls the dog.
I disagree with you. It's bold. It's clearly in this ordinance and you can't get, you can't just have this ordinance pass. And base it on the maintenance because it has a number. So you're gonna have to change. That number. Whatever we agree, we have to change that number or just say they have to be on a leash. And be maintained. You have to do, it's an and. So you're gonna have to put something in there. And I'm hearing mixed. I think we're divided on the length of the leash. I think everybody agrees that the the dog has to be maintained, no matter what it's on. I mean, we're not going to allow a dog to bite something, even if it's on a four foot leash. It's the the ability to maintain is much harder as the leash gets longer. Yes.
Oh, at ten feet. Can you can we live with ten feet?
All right, Lori?
Um, I think the other thing that comes into play is when you have a longer leash, the dogs are going into people's yards and that's where they're. And people are having a lot of issues with people's dogs doing that. The closer your dog is, you know it's your dog that's pooping there and.
They're gonna do that though, whether they're on a six foot leash or eight.
No, but she makes the point that in my yard, I don't mind if people's dogs poop near the curb and stuff, but it would be a little bit more offensive if it was near my front door. And at sixteen feet, you're almost at my front door. You know, I I hear, that's what she's saying. I'm not saying that that happens. I'm just saying that's what she's talking about. It's sixteen feet and you're along a curve, you're sixteen feet off the curve. That goes into deep into someone's yard.
Is ten feet reasonable? I'm I'm asking.
Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry, Judy. What about other people? Six.
Yeah, five or ten.
Yeah, I'm kind of six too.
I just, it is so problematic. I feel watching my dog in the leash. And it's not just my dog. I mean, you have dogs running, I mean, twenty, he's still land there down at the playground. I mean. A little girl, I believe, got bit down at the playground. It's like people are, I mean, you have people who are very good dog owners. But you have people who are not watching your dog at all of where I.
The dogs are not allowed in the playground area. They're not allowed within fifteen feet of the playground area.
Exactly. But people are not making anything. Their dogs are not on leashes. Okay, if you're walking along the park, then you have a fifteen, ten foot even. You're there at all of the parks that leash has been to be able to go in there.
When I walk by my park, I don't put, I don't let my dog go into the into the playground at all. I walk him on the sidewalk or within a foot or two of that sidewalk.
Yeah, unfortunately, and this is the case, unfortunately, we make rules for the people who are not considerate and good owners. Unfortunately, that's how it's done. So this is not a reflection.
I I but if you're already saying dogs are not allowed on the playground, that's a that's a findable offense.
It is.
Right?
It it is, no doubt. But I think it's harder to keep a dog out of there the longer the leash is. I I guess, you know, like I say, I, well, I think we need to see what happens when we put this to motion. I think we've discussed it and. So do I have a motion? Oh, no, wait, wait, I'm sorry. We still have one more thing to talk about because I agree with. The speaker on this next item.
Yeah, consideration of higher fines for dog owners that do not pick up after their animals.
Can Tony, can you tell us what it is right now? I think it's like twenty.
Uh, I'd have to look at it. I it's not much.
Yeah, it's like, I thought it was like twenty five dollars, twenty five fifty at most.
Yeah, that's the original cost, but then you got to add court costs. It's it's less than a hundred dollars.
Well, I can tell you this is, oh.
Just, I just want to know, is that part of this ordinance that that mine?
It should be.
It's not. There's no.
No, but it gives, doesn't it give what class this is?
I don't see that. That's what I'm asking.
He brought, Peter Benson brought it up, but I didn't see it on here.
Yeah, he brought it up and I I agree with it, but I don't think it's, I'm not sure it's part of this discussion.
Oh, usually in here, they tell you what class it is and then that tells you what fine it is, but I don't.
It's not part of twenty one oh nine.
Yeah, it's not part of twenty one oh nine.
So I think we could talk about this, but it would have to be at another meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. I. Because when I read the ordinance, they have them by class with the fines are. I would have thought this would have had a class in it, but the rest of twenty one, we must not have here. Twenty one, right?
Yeah, this ordinance, this ordinance is just changing those particular sections.
Okay.
I happen to deal with leash.
All right, yeah, we'll have to talk about that at another time. But I certainly think there needs to be because that's the number one complaint that I get. And I find it disgusting walking and seeing it laying in the street sidewalks.
Totally agree.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number oh six two 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 zero two zero. To repeal and recreate section twenty one oh nine A and B covering animal control. With the addition of adding a dog park to the exceptions under two B.
Dog park? Well, in case we get one, then we don't have to come back and change it all. Because it's a dog park. Because it's a dog park again. All right, do I have a second? All right, I have a motion in a second to pass ordinance zero six dash twenty twenty repeal and recreate section twenty-one point zero nine sub A and sub B concerning animal control with the addition of the exemption of sub B for a dark dog park. I think I got that right, did I? All right, I am going to open it up for discussion if anybody wants to say something at the very end here.
I'm not going to vote for this because of the restriction on the, on the leash, on the leash length.
Okay. Michael?
I'm agreeing with Bill, I'm not going to vote for it because of the six foot.
All right, all right, well, we'll, we'll do a roll call vote, then we don't have to go around.
Yeah, trustee Broceus?
No.
Trustee Cattabore?
No.
Trustee Duceus?
Yes.
Trustee Palakowski?
No.
And trustee Xander? President Langfield?
Yes. So the motion fails. So I guess we will. I guess it'll have to go back to public safety. I guess you've heard the comments and. See if we can watch something. All righty, let's go to number seven. Discussion of possible action on ordinance number zero seven twenty twenty approving the detachment of certain lands with, within, that should be the village across plains of Brunner property. I don't know if people remember this, this is, if you go out P, it's the first farm to the right. If you go up to the top of the hill, they're selling that land to an individual. And when we develop, the development on the other side, there's a little chunk of property that somehow got onto this that's in the village. So what they're, what we're doing is just cleaning up the border there.
So I couldn't tell by this map where that was.
So this is KP right here, I see, this is Bourbon.
That's Bourbon, yeah.
Yeah, and then this is the Gaisel Valley.
Yep.
Gaisel Valley Park.
Uh, is that? Gaisel Valley or? Hillibrand. It's Hillibrand.
Hillibrand, yeah. And so this is that, that home that's in the township.
Right.
And then this is, this is up on that hill. There's a small sliver of land that was annexed, the legal description was annexed, but when they plotted it, left this piece out.
So it goes all the way downhillibrand to the end of all the houses?
No, it's, it's a much smaller section than that. It doesn't go that far. I thought it was right where the break in, you know, where you can get in up the hill.
Yeah, there's a, there's a small piece, but it goes all the way up by legal definition.
So there's an empty lot between two homes on the, on the east side. It's not that wide.
It's not that wide.
No.
This is a sliver of land at the back property of these lots here.
I think it's like point one three of an acre. It's very small.
So it goes behind all the houses, it's just a little sliver of land? Okay.
That's, that's what I was asking. So it will be, so like, so I'm on that street, so behind my house is that sliver of land as well. And where, is it like?
What side is that are you on?
I'm on the, I'm on that side.
Okay.
I'm like number eighteen there.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, so that's, it's, according to this map, the sliver of property is the whole length.
And is it like inches or?
No, according to this, I think it's three hundred and fifty-six feet by like, in some places nineteen and some by twelve.
Inches.
We have, we, we, we have a surveyor online, I could, I think it might be Buzz E.
It would really be.
It's total of fifty-five hundred square. It's ten feet.
Hey Noah?
Yes, Bill, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Why don't you go ahead and describe this on the map here and maybe we'll get some clarification.
Yeah, certainly, it, it is a small strip. It is from fourteen feet on the very north end. Or actually, oh, what, I'm sorry, it's one point nine three feet wide at the very top end by eleven feet at the bottom. And it doesn't go perfectly straight, but it is a very small strip that runs all the way from the almost Bourbon Road, not quite, all the way down behind those houses. And it was just a difference between the section line and the actual platted line. And it's, it's owned by the Brunner Farm and it's, it's in the village, so it's just in two municipalities.
Hey Noah, I'm going to bring up access dane here just to, to get that on the, the board. Just give me a minute here.
Jay, in the meantime? I think what's important to note here is that the back of none of these lots, the current home lots will be taken, if you will. It's not, it's not that, it's just that the, the, the Brunner property was mistakenly included in the village as annexation.
That is absolutely correct.
Thanks, Noah.
So how is the property annexed by the village accidentally? How does that happen?
Uh, getting the plat wrong during the subdivision process. Right, Noah?
I think that there was an assumption made that the plat was going to go all the way to that section line, which is that line that runs kind of along the plat, but as you're tagging on that access dane, you can see that the subdivision plat didn't actually go to the section line. And I think at some point, there might have been, I'm only guessing, but I believe that there might have been an issue with the fence, and so the subdivider just went to the fence instead of all the way to the section line. So he didn't have any kind of an adverse possession type claim. And so there left a small strip between when it was annexed and when it was actually platted. Does that make sense?
So is that property in Cross Plains or is it in the, in the town?
Well, that's the thing, the rest of the, the Brunner Farm is all in the town of Cross Plains, except for this tiny little strip that got annexed in at the time, but it shouldn't have been.
Okay.
And I got one other question.
Go ahead, Calvin.
A village owns the outlot one, can you show that? Right there. With no access, is, was there any discussion, and this is maybe for Bill, about this in any way helping us get access to that orphaned piece of property?
Yeah, we did, we did talk about, about the transaction with the Hartons and obtaining an easement to get back there. So that, that was discussed, my understanding at least at the last conversation that we did have with Mr. Hartong, was that he, he would be open to that.
Separate discussion.
Separate discussion, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know what the Hartons are planning and doing with that property? Can they just keep the natural farm? So they're not planning on developing it or anything like that?
Yeah, we asked that several times and it was, the response was that it would be cut as is and not for development.
Okay. And he needs, if I remember the discussion, unless it changed, he needs an easement through the farm to get off. He doesn't from P.
Right.
So we are going to be giving a, presenting a land division, not for development, but for the Brunners to retain the farm buildings and Hartong to buy the rest of the land, but there's no proposed development or anything, but the land division is the second step to this process.
He owns the land to the south of that already, correct? Hart, yeah.
Like the shed, yeah.
Yeah, because that's where, because right now we have the ICH trail passing between the Brunner Farm, I believe, and that, and the old shed.
No, it's south.
We have an easement on the park.
Yeah, but east, yeah, it also said easement on that, okay.
We have to go through the same process with the sliver.
Okay, so he's, so, so James was looking to buying the whole property, the farm buildings and everything?
No.
No.
Oh, just a part, just that.
That's what they're going to do is divide the property.
I got you.
And but they still, my understanding, they still needed an easement to their property.
Okay.
So he's buying the land to the north of the farm where that hill is on the corner there.
Yeah, he's going to be everything in, in green.
Right, and all that, okay.
All right, so I have a motion.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance number zero seven two zero two zero, approving the detachment of certain lands within the village of Cross Plains.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion in a second to approve the ordinance zero seven dash twenty twenty approving the detachment of certain lands within the village of Cross Plains.
Uh, trustee Xander?
No, no, Bill, we're in discussion right now. Oh, so if my property line butting up against that, am I, do I need to abstain from voting or can I still vote on that?
You can still vote, there's no.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Michael?
Is the village losing a lot of tax revenue by removing this land from this?
No. No, it's all, I mean, it's all egg right now anyways, and it's a small piece, so, no.
I figured not, I was just curious.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Trustee Xander? Trustee Palakowski?
Yes.
Trustee Duceus?
Yes.
Trustee Cattabore?
Yes.
Trustee Broceus?
Yes.
And President Langfield?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you, Noah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, thank you.
All right, discussion of possible action regarding water capital improvements projects. We will start with A.
So I have, I believe Brian is with us, he's going to give us an update on this, on the memo. And, go ahead, Brian.
Oh, yeah, you're all set, okay. Yeah, I just asked Bill and Jane, Jane, if we could have a moment of your time this evening to talk about the wells specifically, but also some other bigger picture items. So we are nearing the end of our previously approved budget for a look at well three. That was to obtain a well site permit from DNR and get started on some of the early stages of design. That's all gone fairly well, though we are coming up on the end of that and ready to start the next phase. Shy of, of going through the entire memo, I was just going to summarize some of the bigger pieces and certainly take any questions that the board has. But in a nutshell, as the preliminary design began and we started doing some more walkthroughs with village staff, a few items came up that don't necessarily need to happen with this effort, but may make sense to coordinate with this well three project. So just working our way down, the first is a test well. Generally, we had not seen DNR require a test well for an additional well in a fairly stable system such as yours, that does not have problems with water quality. Because it is the, would be the only well south of Black Earth Creek, DNR is going to be requiring a test well, which is, is about how it sounds. You drill a smaller, shorter hole than the permanent well and you drop a temporary pump in it to see, confirm basically the water quality and the availability of water in that particular spot. So that would be, the first item is, is coordinating that with a contractor or well builder. The next alludes to some of the other things I was talking about. While investigating some of the improvements to well three, we started looking also at wells one and two in coordination with the previous water system master plan recommendations that also talked about the need for a reservoir, an additional tank, elevated tank. That previous study is over twenty years old. So given the assumptions from twenty years ago, don't always match those reality as far as population growth, current system needs, current twenty twenty condition of some of your infrastructure, in particular your controls. We thought it, it may be good to propose looking at an updated master plan for your water system. Truing up your population numbers, looking at all of your uses, trying to project twenty years from now and what kind of improvements you may want to contemplate as part of both this well three effort, but also future efforts. Now, at which point should you start considering a well four? When is that reservoir going to be needed? Those types of things. The next is starting to further the impact fee. Certainly, a portion of this new well three is, is because of pending developments. Scenic Valley to the southwest, the creek crossing to the north and, and potential future development in that same area. But almost all of a reservoir would have to be related to those subdivisions. So there's, there's some ability to capture costs as those homes get built through what's called an impact fee. It's a special type of cost that's only assessed to new home construction, thereby kind of capturing dollars from those folks as opposed to putting it all on the existing ratepayers. And the last, of course, would be continuing the preliminary design services for, for well three, which at the moment is contemplated for construction in twenty twenty-two. Given the variability of what is going to come out of some of those efforts, what we contemplate is moving ahead with those efforts as everyone's comfortable on the board, but at a not to exceed eighty thousand dollar level, at which point we'd have completed the impact fee study, completed the water system plan, confirmed the geology and the hydrogeology at the test well, and then could provide a much tighter scope for well three itself. And what or if you may want to contemplate improvements at wells one and two. So that's why those are shown here is just to get those on the village board's radar. But, but really, you won't know and, and we won't know, honestly, what would go into those until that water system plan is completed and the test well is completed and the impact fee is contemplated. And that's, that's kind of the, the long and short of it, but I'd certainly be happy to take any questions.
I'm going to, this is Jay. So I just want to make sure I understand exactly what you're suggesting. The eighty, the eighty thousand would cover one through four of the above memo?
Correct.
And is there a way of kind of breaking out of the four, you know, percentages or dollars of what each one would be?
Yeah. Yeah, roughly speaking, the system master plan is probably gonna be. Twenty five to thirty. The impact fee, we've actually already gotten a pretty good head start on because we had available budget on the previous authorization. So I'd say that's probably. Could be completed with ten of that eighty. The test well coordination is gonna depend a little bit on what we find, what the contractor finds during that, but roughly speaking. That would be ten to fifteen, and then the balance would be diving into the nitty gritty of the design of. Of the twenty twenty two project.
Thank you.
Hey, Brian, this is Bill, I just wanna make sure that this is also clear that the eighty thousand dollars this is for one and four and that. The estimated construction cost for that. The test well is the other amount fifty to sixty thousand dollars.
That's correct, that is correct, so the test well would be done by a well drilling contractor. That's why we've got a range in there, actual cost would be based on those quotes. From a contractor.
And that test well would be this year?
Yes, we would recommend that be done yet this fall. That'll allow, you know, on the off chance there's, for whatever reason. The bedrock in that area is is higher in RDM or something that would just not be contemplated, it would it would allow for adjusting. The designs for well three and not having to impact the construction schedule, so yes, we would recommend. Proceeding with that test well this late summer slash fall.
Yeah, Bill and then Calvin.
So where are, I don't know where wells one and two are, and where is well three going?
Sure. Well, one is, boy, I'm blinking on the name of the street, it's tucked up against the. Hillside north of Highway fourteen. It's a dead end street.
East Street.
East Street, thank you, Jerry. That is your original well, they're numbered in the order they were born. Here we go, thank you, Bill. Well, two is over in the park. It's a structure that's kind of is in the parking lot there, where Bill's pointing out.
Next to the shell, part of the shell.
Oh, okay.
Half the shelter is the well. Half of that shelter, yeah, the bare part shelter, the one half is a well, the other is.
Yes, thank you, I should have mentioned that in my my introduction. Well, three is contemplated for village property in a park over on the west side, but as we mentioned, south of. The creek, which is what had the DNR require a test well. So this area had always been. Sort of declared as a future potential well site. Yes, that's off Gil's way. So it'd be tucked in there behind the the current park infrastructure.
Isn't the reservoir though on top of the hill? Yeah, just just a piece of that.
Yes. Fairly advantageous from a filling the reservoir standpoint, you know, without having to run water through the entire system.
It's where the bike, it's where the bike, off bike.
There's a smaller reservoir, isn't there, Brian, Jerry?
Yes, that's on the northeast corner of of the village, it's quite small, that is your original reservoir. And.
By Dorothy Scott's park.
Really?
A little south of there.
In the middle of the screen, right there.
That's a small in-ground concrete fifty thousand gallon tank. It really, other than for having options for control and a use when the large reservoir. Off of Laden Drive is out of service. It really doesn't provide any usable capacity to the village.
Yes, that's a long, it's been there forever, and as Jerry pointed out, it it's good for a passable backup, but it. It doesn't do you a whole lot of favors at the moment, other than being an available backup.
Yeah, I just wonder if Brian could speak to. The 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 work that's been complete, the preliminary design, were there multiple sites looked at for this? And what, if any, design work has been done on that property and what the buildings might look like, size and parking?
This site had had been identified actually on the range of twenty years ago, it was one of three sites that that. Previous water system study examined. And then when this development came in, this area was specifically kind of cordoned off for future well three. It's it's far enough from Black Earth Creek that we don't have to worry about. Any contaminants, for some reason, you know, somebody spills a barrel of oil in the creek, while that would be certainly disastrous for the creek. You kind of wanna be a little further away from natural water bodies. The land was required to be dedicated as part of the plant, so the land itself did not cost the village any money. And it's also reasonably near to that reservoir, which makes filling the reservoir a much more efficient process. So there were multiple sites looked at, but that was several decades ago to kind of horn in on this specific spot. And then when the development came in, this land was secured. We have some concept renderings of the. Approximate footprint of what the the wellhouse could look like. Actually, the Vandewell and Associates is actually working on some sort of three dimensional. Renderings that would be used for a upcoming. And I don't, there's been no date set, but an upcoming public meeting about adding the well. And where it would go and how it would look. As far as portions of the design that are complete. We've got, you know, ideas, preliminary designer call it, of depth of the well, horsepower of the pumps required. We've been in touch with the utility companies, I'm getting three-phase power to the site. We've certainly done all the field survey of this location. And worked with Jerry and his staff on. Kind of just layout of the building, where the chemicals would go, all those sorts of things.
This uses, well, this would probably tap into the same aquifer that the other two wells are using then?
Yes.
Likely?
Absolutely, well, yeah, these will be deep enough, as are your existing wells, that they'll be all sharing the same same aquifer. And that's roughly three hundred feet, three hundred feet deep.
Any other question? Don't think we have to take any action on this at this time. You weren't looking for any action tonight, were you, Brian, this is more informational?
Well, if if it pleases the board, we wanted to make sure we. We, everybody was comfortable with kind of where we're at and what are the next steps. And that we. If that's correct, that we'd have permission to continue, continue on these efforts, as I mentioned, the originally approved forty two thousand dollar scope. We've completed the scope and have been using the, what was the available budget to start working on the impact fee study, start. Continuing on the design, but I wanted to get, I guess, official permission to continue that effort.
Well, I guess from my, what I'm looking at is I think we made a commitment to well three, but I guess what I would ask that. For now, the water system master plan update, I guess I'd like to hold off on that for a little while. Instead of trying to spend the money this year, maybe work it into next year's budget and have a little bit better understanding of exactly, I I see your points right here, but. It seems to me, I don't, again, I see so many documents, I forget where I get them from, but I thought, I saw a document that actually went through. Our current wells and our lift station that had what each of them needed and what the cost. Would be to upgrade them to meet state standards and stuff, I thought I read a document that had all that on it, so I I don't know if that. Was like the starting of the water system master plan or what document that was.
Thought that was a DNR report, too.
And I don't know.
Yeah, that you that may be the what's called the sanitary survey?
I don't know, something that talked about well one, it would cost eight hundred thousand to rebuild and you would move into. The kitchen area of the concession stand, so you didn't have to do structure change that. Well, one, you'd have to do an add-on and you have to separate the chemicals. From the actual well that can't be in the same room and there were some electrical clearances that we didn't have, there was a document that I read that had this with cost.
Yep. Go ahead, Jerry.
Sometimes I don't know if I dreamed this up or I.
No, the document you read was correct, and the generation of that document was. Intended to find out exactly how much money we were gonna have to spend. To get all the wells. Up to current code. We're gonna do that in conjunction with this well number three project. So we could fold it as much as possible into the low interest loan funding through the Clean Water Fund. And review of that document, when Ben, you and I, Jay and Bill went through that. That's what resulted in the decision that we needed to upgrade the master plan that was last done in nineteen ninety nine. So. Yes, that delaying the master plan a few months. Will work. But we do need approval of funding to go ahead and get. The test well drilled this fall for the well number three site. And to continue with the other well number three. Directly related projects that Brian outlined in his memo, the first, I think it's the first three items in his memo.
Brian, Brian and Jerry, can can that discussion and action wait until the July meeting as we'll be talking about capital improvements for the rest of the year at the July meeting?
I think some of it could, it it would be. It'd be nice to get that test well. Started to get it on somebody's calendar, it's gonna be, I'm more thinking about trying to get it on a contractor's schedule at this fall.
But I'm, if I will add to what we talked about before, when I asked for a breakdown, are you looking at that I wrote down ten to fifteen thousand for that work to go, obviously it doesn't actually. I I know the well itself is gonna cost more than that, but the ten fifteen is what you're asking for tonight, so you can continue with that?
That would be to to get at the test well, that'd be all the engineering needed to. Arrange for, complete the test well, yes, that is correct.
Okay, Kelvin?
Yeah, I'm I'm wondering that, Jerry, you kind of answered the question, I figured the fifty to sixty thousand, since the test well was not part of the budget and plan. That that was an additional request for funding. What I don't recall is if we budgeted anything beyond the forty two thousand dollars worth of engineering work. And I feel like we did, but I don't know what that number is, I thought it was an additional, I thought it was a hundred thousand total.
No, I thought it was sixty. But I, I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if Bill Chang, if you have that information or if Jerry remembers that budget number, anybody remembers it. What we budgeted for some of this work this year?
I do not remember the number, and I do not have. I don't have a copy of my budget here at home with me, so I can't look it up right at the.
Yeah, because, I mean, i- if we if we're within the budget constraints and we're still working on the project, well, then I don't know if we need to make an approval of that necessarily, I mean, maybe we can to support that, and I would if that's the case. I guess if we're making an additional request out of the budget, I think that's where I would like a little more information before we before we take that step.
Brian, do you remember how much we had for engineering for well three?
I I believe it was a hundred even.
Yeah, I think.
Stuck in my head. I don't know if that's what the final budget, but that was what was proposed in the. In the budget project meeting, that would have been like October, November of twenty nineteen.
I have my budget with you, would it be a line item?
It would.
Would be, it's a line item under the water section of the of the binder under capital.
Yeah, if you go to the end of that capital that you were looking at, it was probably in there.
Well, engineering would be that.
If we're borrowing for it, it would be, I believe, because then it gets rolled into the well project.
Yes, all of the, all of these costs would be refunded by a safe drinking water fund loan program, obviously that would not happen until twenty twenty two. But, yeah, all of all of these costs would get rolled into that refinancing under the DNR's Safe Drinking Water Fund.
See, that's.
It doesn't show it in there.
But I know in the twenty nineteen, there was like in that one point six million dollar bomb thing, there was a hundred thousand dollars for water in there, I don't know if that dealt with this or not.
Well, I guess, this is another thing we could add to the June thirtieth meeting. That's, you know, a week away. That way we have a little bit more information to know exactly what we need to budget this year and what can actually fall into the process for twenty twenty one.
We have Bobby on the line here, Bobby, I know that that you're traveling, are you able to, are you in a spot where you'd be able to access those documents?
She she just did on chat.
Yeah.
I'm here, Bill.
Okay, go ahead.
Yep, so we budgeted a hundred grand in twenty nineteen, and then it wasn't all spent in twenty nineteen, so we carried over fifty five into twenty twenty for the well project.
Is that still unspent, Bobby?
What's that?
Is that still unspent, that fifty five thousand? That's what I'm wondering, right?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
I would imagine we've been nibbling at it with our forty two thousand, but that started in twenty nineteen also, so.
Yeah, so a portion of that. Well, I I think I would easily be able to support pushing forward with more engineering work as long as it comes out of the existing budget at any time, but. We're still gonna have to get another fifty or sixty on top of what we budgeted to drill the well this. The test well.
Yeah, I think we, what I I think what we need to do is push this, because we're gonna spend a lot of time, then we need to push it to the June thirtieth and let's get some real numbers. So we actually know what we have and how much more we're looking to to spend. If that's, okay, Eva, I'm sorry, that means it's going to be a little bit longer than we originally promised, so.
Well, I would prefer that over waiting till July. I'm, I'm just afraid if we wait till July, we may not be able to get on a well driller's schedule for this fall.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Hi, so did the residents lose their window of opportunity to make comments on the proposed location? I know that Casey Fitz Randolph spoke at the beginning, that's what, this is what he's talking about. And so there are concerns about it being in that part. So did we, you missed it, we missed it, but.
We have not held a public meeting yet on the project. First of all, we don't have any real documentation to show the public. It's currently being generated at Vandewell and Associates. The one thing that should be noted and the board should be aware of is this site was earmarked for well number three when the plat was developed. The plat stated that, states that on it, along with that'd also be park property. That cement walkway up through the middle of the park that was installed with the intentions of being the access route to the well. It's nine inch thick concrete. This, the concept of a well going there has existed for twenty plus years. We do intend to make, have a public meeting or two, to show the residents what this could potentially look like. Until that test well is drilled though and we find out that everything is good and kosher, we don't know for certain that we can put well number three there. So there it's good, it's, it's one of those deals where it's easy to get the cart before the horse sometimes in this situation.
But for, to, to directly answer your question, clearly, we're going to get input from the residents on what the structure looks like and the size of, all of that will be educated. Right now, that has been, you know, the site for quite a while, as Jerry said. So that part, if the well goes, is probably where the well will be, but how the building looks and the landscaping certainly is open for people to comment on. And again, we'll, we'll see if the well even works there.
Kevin? Yeah, I guess that's, Jerry sort of answered it, but maybe you could say it explicitly. Jerry, does that mean that the public meeting would happen after the test well?
No, once Vandewell gets done with the renderings for a conceptual plan, we intend to figure out a date, schedule a first public meeting. We, we need to start getting the public involved. That way, if everything goes smoothly with the test well, which we anticipate it will, but there's always a maybe. But we want to get the public involved late this summer, so we can get through that process, so we can do construction in twenty twenty-one. We can't wait till after the test well and just start the public input in twenty twenty-one and expect to get anything constructed. That, that would be unfair to the neighbors.
I think construction is for twenty twenty-two.
We'd be finalizing design in twenty twenty-one, going to bid in twenty twenty-one.
I misspoke, sorry.
No, that's all right, that's all right. It's changed a couple times. Does that answer?
It does. So if I'm understanding, there would be no discussion of it being put into a different location. The only input you'd be looking for from the residents was, would be what, what it looks like.
Most likely, yes.
Was that, um, so I remember when we moved into the area and I'm not on Gil's way, I'm on Tilda, um, we had, uh, I think it was called ordinance, this has been so long ago, about what, what the lots looked like next to and a little bit about the neighborhood. We could make some decisions. For example, my husband and I had bought a property and found out it was zoned for commercial next doors. We ended up buying a different lot once we saw that. Was, has that been in those?
So there, there would be restricted covenants within each division that are called, I think that's referring to.
Yeah.
And so.
Would it be in the developer's agreement? Like, would it state in, in the area, if it's on the plat that it's known?
Yeah, so the, the, the identity of the location of the well should be on the plat. There should be a developer's agreement, but the restricted covenants themselves.
Covenants.
Yeah, are not, are probably not in the developer's agreement. Generally, the developer agreement refers to it as an attachment, so.
This is so.
I think the residents are just concerned that we have very little green space at all and this would be kind of dividing what little green space we have there up, which the children might not use to run besides using the playground equipment. It's like kickball, softball, soccer. I know that Parks and Rec uses it for archery. And, and so it's just this nice green space that would be maybe not able to be used in the same ways if this goes there.
I don't know about the other items you discussed, but I have been in communication with Parks and Rec and our current plan, as conceptual as it is, does not impact the archery area at all.
Would any, um, do you know lighting is required? I know this gets into the design if you just, so we know what to expect in the future for discussions, you know?
Well, I would imagine there would be light over the door.
We have, we have a gun.
Yeah.
There isn't going to be.
We're long, we're a long ways from that point in the design.
But this is not a, a place where there's going to be people all the time. I mean, as you saw, a lot of people didn't even know the well is right there at Bear Park, part of the, the concessions stand, I think there are people.
I think that concern from the residents is the breaking up of the space.
Yeah.
I guess we'll just, I, I, I can't tell you how that's.
We have a hand up on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
You want me to?
Yeah, yeah, and then we got to move on.
Hi, this is Jessica Sexton. I'm a resident in the area. I just had a question regarding the test well itself, actually. Would you be able to provide what the diameter of the test well is, how long it's going to remain open and how it would be protected from accidental access, seeing it as it is in a park and children around?
Sure, yeah. That would likely be a twelve inch diameter well. It'd have a locking, a locked lid to both prevent accidental or intentional intrusion into the well. It would run, we work with the well driller, but typically you'll run a test well for three to seven days. And unless you find something really weird or that requires additional investigation, that's, that's the end of it. And then it would be capped.
Will probably require as part of the, the bid process for drilling the test well that they use temporary chain link fence to to secure the entire site. While the, while the well is actually being drilled, when the truck is parked there drilling it, and then when that's actually being test pumped as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we are going to at least move, we have, we have another hand. Do you want?
Yeah. Go ahead, Casey.
Okay, thanks. I'm, I'm curious about noise as well and, and what that would, what that would mean for the neighborhood, if anything.
The they're not particularly noisy, as you probably saw, well one is, it's right next to a house in the neighborhood right now. These newer well houses are certainly insulated better than, than your well one. Am I right, Jerry, in thinking that your existing wells probably kick on twice a day, three times a day?
About six, about six cycles a day.
So I'm trying to think of if there'd be a predictable time where you could just sit outside well two, for example, that's in the park, that I would say it's probably the same, like a car running, Jerry, if you're outside the well.
Uh, I don't know that it's even that noticeable. I, I, I walk up to the well houses, honestly, I don't know if the pump is running or not until I open the door.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're fairly, fairly quiet. Obviously, the construction would be a construction site during the day, but the contract would have to abide by all the village construction noise origins.
The, the, the completed well number three would have a, will have a generator on site for backup power. Obviously, if there's a power outage, the generator would run. And then normally we exercise the generators for about a half hour a week, one day per week. Schedule them to run for a half hour, but that's during normal working hours as well. That's probably the most noise on a regular basis that you would ever hear.
Okay, well, we're going to refer this to the June target meeting. We should understand, give a little bit more details on the actual costs and what we actually need to talk about.
Would you like me to bring anything more detailed to that meeting's discussion?
Uh, I guess, I don't know if you have to bring it to the meeting, if you can get it to Bill ahead of time, so we have it ahead of time probably. Would be helpful, just so we have more data to work on.
We'll need to get together and clarify the, the numbers a little better is what we'll need to do, Brian.
Gotcha. Okay.
I'll talk, I'll talk to you tomorrow about that.
Done and done.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
All right, go to number nine, discussion and possible action regarding twenty twenty-one budget goals and objectives.
So, as you all know, we're starting the, the budget cycle here early. We've, I've sent out the capital improvement project worksheets to department staff. I believe Bobby is, is working on sending the, the worksheet out to staff for the, the operating budget. And so before we, before we get knee deep into the budgeting cycle, we just want to make sure that we have an understanding of of goals and priorities and objectives from the village board, so that we can plan in coordination with you. And so in the worksheet, we did have, you know, kind of six high level items here, simplifying the budget and the budgeting process, including the capital improvement plan, lowering the debt service, moving recurring capital expenses to the budget side. We, we talked about that last year, especially with, with transportation. Maintaining a tax levy that's, that's in coordination with, with that new construction. Restructuring funds, we had talked about that in sewer, and then providing more due diligence for capital project proposals as we're going towards having more emphasis on, on the following year. Bobby, do you have anything to add that you want to seek out here?
No, I think those are good points.
Comments, questions? Anybody here have some goals or objectives they'd like to add to that?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Michael.
When you say simplify the budget and budgeting process in the capital improvement plan, what do you mean by that? Like, what would be an example?
Yeah, so I, I personally think that going through our budget documents can, can be done with exhibits that are easier to read for a layperson. So if, unless you deal with that every day, it's hard to get through and understand, you know, where some of these line items are going to.
Like the way the budget's structured, you're just saying like just how it's printed out when you're looking at it, is like what you're saying?
And understanding, you know, really the process. I mean, we went through this through even the notice last year. The notice of the budget was there so much that, that we could really simplify it. Understanding, you know, really how the budget and the different accounts interact. I mean, does it have to, for example, you take a park, you take a look at Park and Rec, you know, the revenues are divided, yeah, so particular revenue gets put in there for particular expense, expenditures, and it doesn't necessarily have to be that way. It's, it's great for, for track keeping on the admin side and on the finance side, but unless you're really diving into it, the question becomes, does it need to be displayed? Or does it, you know, is it better off on a back, a back page or a back, an exhibit that you can reference and go to? And then just lessening the confusion on the front part, making sure that we understand the budget there.
Bill and then Lori.
Oh, I'd like to see us have a limit to the tax increase. I, I think we typically have that as a, as an item when we're looking at budget. You know, last year was quite, quite high. We got it down from even a bigger number, but you know, if people are looking at their water bill now, people are looking at their tax bill. And, you know, I'm afraid that we're going to start losing people that are on fixed income because we keep, you know, wanting new and nicer things. So, you know, really restricts what that tax rate increase would be.
I guess my thing is the water bill. I've just been hearing a bunch of people really, it's crazy how much the cost is for our water here and a lot of just upset residents and I don't know how to explain that. And I think maybe we need to have something in a newsletter or something, or you really look at that for the budget, if there's anything that we can do. I was just going to say Becky Ward did a really good job on Facebook the other day explaining it. Did you see that?
Yeah.
So I think even if we take from that and put that in the newsletter or something, she did a great job.
And as you saw from the discussion, it's going to go off, unfortunately. So I, I, I agree that I think goes to the bill and you, you can't look at, and this is what Bill's talking about, making it more understandable. You can't look at these things as separate because basically, put it one way, they all come out of the same pair of pants, they're just coming out of different pockets. But it's costing people money. And so I agree, since water's going out, we should be looking at the other taxing sewer and general tax levy on balancing that out. We shouldn't look at them as individual. Kevin, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, yeah, I did. Going back to point number one, other, simplifying the budget and budgeting process. And, and Bill's comment about making it easier to understand, I, with, I have seen quite a few times with budgets, especially with businesses and nonprofits, but still, I'm wondering if it's possible if we could have a dashboard where, where we have something that's really
Simple for us, but also for the residents to look at and see how we're doing monthly or quarterly or whatever the space is. Very easy to read. Maybe it's for each, maybe the water has a dashboard maybe, you know. But general operating has dashboard, but something to make it real easy and upfront, one page, uh, so people can understand what they're seeing.
All good discussion. Anything else?
Alrighty, we will, uh, I could say it's gonna be in a couple, well, next month, we're gonna start about twenty twenty capital and. August and I will be talking about it every meeting. Alright, very good. We will go to number ten, discussion and possible action to relocate the village. Across Plains polling place.
So, um. We are looking at potentially moving the polling place from the fire station to the library. As we learned this past spring election. Of conflict between of having an election in a public safety building and the potential liability to. The public safety personnel there with the unknown of the number of people walking through the facility. And so we did take a look at a number of different facilities, both public and private. Um, and fortunately, we weren't able to find a place that that would work. Um, now that that's seen that the public library is perfect for elections. But that is currently what we do have. Yeah, we have a we have an election coming up, a primary in August. For which if we are to move or relocate polling place, I need time to be able to to proper properly vet it. And set and get it changed in the Wisconsin voting system. Um, and then of of course, we have a the general election coming up in November. So unless there's any other recommendation of other places?
Bill and Judy, have you looked at Glacier Creek High School?
Yeah, we've we've requested to have it there. Um, we actually have a preliminary draft. Um, out there waiting for response. It would only work in the situation where there was no school. And we we talked about that in detail and that if if there was still this quarantine, then that it would work perfectly. However, if they are going back to school, then we we would have that conflict with them during lunch and days.
Sorry, does it have to be at a a building that we own that looks?
It it does not, uh, although having a building that we own, you know, we get a control. Reservations, any improvements that we need to do.
Cause if we looked at St. Francis Fellowship Hall?
We have not.
I think that may be a good place. I mean, it's great. The parking's great and it it's not connected to the school, so even if there was a school, okay.
I have Kevin and then Lori, do you wanna talk?
Yeah, well, Judy asked one of my questions. I thought it had to be. No, as far as we can prove or show that it would be a better polling place, polling place than what we have as options. And, um, uh, I guess I need a little explanation of why it cannot be at the fire station. And if we say, no, we don't want to, we, I mean, what what?
There's good reason. So the Friday before the spring election. The chief, because of the COVID nineteen, the spread of it and the shutdown, I think. And this is east of New York, they almost all fire stations, police stations, EMS closed down to the public because. Of the close quarters and the danger of losing your whole workforce to the the virus. So on Friday afternoon, the chief wanted to shut down fire department, which a lot of places were. Of course, we had a vote going on Tuesday, so I was able to work with. Bill and the chief, and we came up with an agreement to run it Tuesday with. You know, certain precautions, we agreed to clean right up after and and stuff like that. But we can't afford to go into a November election with potentially that same thing happening to us. Cause there's a lot of state laws, and that's what I had to point out. You can't just move a polling place. You have to, there's procedures to it. So from one standpoint, the chief is right on. I I he's right on. We should not be having. Polling places that places of of first responders. I thought not to have that bid dump for this same reason. It's just not a good idea because of what can happen. And what's needed at those facility. So then we agreed to do the spring one, but we need certainty, I feel for the fall one. That's a big election. A lot of lawsuits happen and stuff. We we have to be ready to go. So we had to find an alternative location that we knew we could have the election on. It didn't matter what was happening with the pandemic. Because people are looking at potentially there will be another huge spike. And some of the same restricted restrictions that have been placed on us in March may be placed on in November again. So we decided that it's best for everybody for us to move to polling place.
But I guess what I'm wondering though is, isn't the polling done in a room that's separate from? Most of the equipment and the people and the machinery?
Well, it's their training area and their their meeting area and the command post area. And when they walk to the building, they walk right past all the officer. Officers there.
I I think the bathrooms would be shared, the same bathroom. There's a separate bathroom.
It it makes sense. I I think, you know, while the fire, and here's the thing, that is not our building. That belongs to the fire district and we only have three votes. We only have thirty three percent of control. So it's not something we actually have control, and I believe we need to have control. We can't have it where the last minute it got the lock yet. Um, I think, you know, uh, if the church is willing to do that, you know, that is a big place. I think this would work. I think the way we ran the last meeting with social distancing, you know, on that. I think this can work. I think we have to push hard for absentee voting, the lower the numbers. But this is something that we have to documently address and we really need, in all fairness, to try to lock down something. And this is really the best, if we get our new village hall.
Yeah, I mean, I I understand, but this we're this building, this room is. Is less than twenty five percent the size of the room that we were using at the fire station, right?
I know, but you don't understand if the chief.
I I get that, but my point is, is, you know, we've had. Up until this year, we've had very long lines of people waiting to vote. And you're talking November, November could be two feet of snow or it could be seventy degrees. And the only place you're gonna put them is outside.
No, we can get twenty people from the door. When I when we did it for that meeting, they come in that door, come in here, go all that way.
Right, but we'd have hundreds of people.
Oh, I understand that. I I'm just saying not everybody has to stay outside.
Right, well, we might be quite good to go.
Well, we move them through, but come up with, I I can understand. Why people are not happy with it, but come up with a solution. I I heard the fellowship hall, but what's another solution? I can't force the chief to do it, and he's gonna have legitimate rights if it shuts down and he doesn't want us to miss this.
Other polling places have schools, so I mean, during school, while school's going on.
Well, I think, again, that's not our building, so if the school district said that you can use it if we're not in session, which you can't use to learn session, yeah.
Yeah, we have to be in the first position.
Yeah.
So, you know, where wherever it is, unless unless we're leasing leasing paid money to lease a space. We have to negotiate that first position to be able to to control us being in that building. That's that's, I I don't care where it is, uh, as long as it meets Wisconsin legal permission requirements. And that we can get that first position because, again. If if this thing's fine and we're again in a smaller situation to be to have to move the election. Within weeks' time. We're not gonna be able to to do that with this general election. I got a hand up here.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, this is Pam Born chiming in. I ran the blood drive up at the fellowship halls here last May. May fourteenth, I believe it was. No, yeah, anyway. And we have one coming up in July. It that that place works out really well if you have people wiping down the door. You know, doing some things for the sanitation part of it. But it it really is an open area. It has a parking lot. It has the hallway that you can mark off for the six foot distancing. Um, and I would I would suggest you try that before you even consider the library. The library, I drove over there and there's only two like handicap. Corners on that whole street and the streets attaching don't necessarily have a handicap, uh, you know, like a wheelchair. And there's, you know, a minimal parking. It'll be November. I don't know about lighting over there. And that room that you wanna use has people passing same way in, same way out. I I just think that's a kind of a not a health healthy way to use that room. But I would I would suggest you talk to the St. Francis and see if you could use the fellowship hall. It worked out really well. I can, I mean, like I said, they had the hallway where we could just tape off and mark the six foot for distancing. We did require masks on everybody, but, uh, which is still advised, but, um, anyway, that's my thought.
Yeah, just just, you know, Pam, we run people in through the front doors and then they go off. Uh, the side door, so they don't pass each other at all. So we have separation and the parking lot would be the swim pool parking lot would be. Where we would say people can park. It is a little bit of a walk, but there is some off-street parking here.
In winter, that's not wise or healthy for people either standing out in the cold or snow or whatever it could be where. The fellowship hall has the hallway, at least some people could be lining up in there. Just a thought. Thank you.
In Bill, can you remind us of the numbers in spring? How many people voted total and how many people voted in person?
In the spring, about three hundred people voted in person.
And how many was the total?
We had fourteen ninety eight, one thousand one hundred.
Okay. And we could assume that November would probably be slightly larger than that by a certain percentage. Uh, and we had to turn around pretty quick to get some of those mail-in ballots, absentee ballots. Well, if we do a better job at that part again. Really, we're looking at, I think, kind of at most three hundred people or four, maybe four or five hundred people at most, I should say. We and we could work to get that number down if we just, if we as a community push hard to get people to do mail-in and absentee. So I'm not, you know, I would like to just keep it at the 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 fire station, but absent that. At least we own this building and maybe St. Francis works, I guess. I'll be voting absentee.
Alright, do you need some action on this?
Yeah, cause well, I have to, I we, there's there's a timeframe here, so I have to notify Wisconsin election. At least thirty days before the the next election, just August eleven. And so, uh, the actions to reply that it. For me to to be able to work in agreement with St. Francis for the fellowship hall, and if not that, not that facility, then this.
Well, okay, I'm gonna have Judy, Michael and myself.
That's, I was just gonna say, if you could check the St. Francis before the next meeting, on June twelfth or June thirtieth, we could talk about it.
My suggestion would be, I mean, would we wanna see if this worked for the August and then? If we need to move it to St. Francis, that's an option. I mean, cause we're not locked into both elections at the same place.
Yeah, I I'd wanna try to keep it the same polling place as much as possible.
Well, sure, oh, well, yeah.
I I guess I'd just modify. I I I think you should contact. St. Francis, but then take a look at it, think about how you would run the election and then. I think it's up to you as the clerk if which one you think is best for the, you're the one in charge of the election. So I I I think we should, I'd like you make the call. I think it's a great suggestion. And it should be checked out, but I don't wanna say you need to go there and then here if you think this is a better spot for it. I'd second that.
Not that it was motion, but I support that.
So do you want a?
I want a motion, yeah.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion for giving. The authority of administrator Bill Chang, administrator slash clerk. Bill Chang, the option of running the election polling place at either. The Cross Plains Dairy Library or St. Francis Fellowship Hall.
I'll second that.
Alright, uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All saying. Alright, is that good? Alright.
Thank you.
Future items, agenda item. Anybody have a future? Okay, I see Kevin.
Well, we we just said that we'd look at that chapter two and three for months, and I'm asking you or Bill just to stick it out there in a, you know, in. October or something, I guess.
And then to look at it again.
Yeah. And then we did talk, you know, dog leash, I guess, to go back.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
And the poo, though, we can talk about that.
The poo.
The poo fine?
Can we address that all at one time or do we have to see that, or do we hit that separate?
Well, we referred it back.
No, the 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 waste cleanup, the different.
No, no, it's going back to the harbor. Yeah, yeah, you might as well talk about the the waste part of that land and then bring a bowl back at the same time.
I guess it's a safety issue, right?
You don't wanna step in and slow down.
Yeah.
And the chief's there.
Yeah.
And I wanna add one more to those. Right now, our dogs are allowed in all parks. And is there any way we can look at it? They're only allowed in some parks, cause you're right, some people are scared of them. And some people are allergic to them, and I've gotten that complaint a lot, that there's no park that they can take their kids to, that there isn't dogs allowed.
Again, you know, that's a big circle number we had.
Right, but but that was also with. But that was what Chief James said. I think Tony will be better.
Yeah, but again, I just want, again, there's an educational that.
Right.
It forces people to kind of know which parks you can have, which you can't. And that was the argument of just having them at all, that everybody knows. So I guess you can look at that, but that one's gonna be.
No, that goes that goes to parking rec, cause it.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
It's sure done.
There's not, yeah, we'll have to let her know that. Alright, anything else?
Uh, we, I know we're, it's on the burner about how much water we're losing. Are we gonna put that on something?
Well, you can do it, but I I didn't keep in track. I mean, I can tell you. We hired a company to look for leaks. They found three small ones, they're gonna fix those and see if it makes a difference. We pulled out twenty residential meters and they tested all at ninety three percent. So we still have not found it, so now I think they're looking into more of the county part of it.
When we do find it, we'll bring it back.
So right now, they're still working on it, but we pay zero law.
Michael. When you say accounting, what do you mean, like?
Well, we we're gonna look at the billing cycles to see if there was all of a sudden a huge drop in billing or spike in billing. Cause right now, we're running, we're be talking about this now.
No.
Well, we're not making a decision. This is an information.
But it's.
It's fine. I, yeah, I I'm asking the question. I feel, I feel.
No, I'm asking though, we should put it on a.
If we're gonna talk about like this month, then I think we should.
Or just have it informational. Or just have it informational.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, because other people, other people may be interested in the subject.
Alright, anything else?
I make a motion to go into closed session.
Do we have a second? We'll call a vote.
Trustee Kettlebauer?
Yes.
Trustee Busius?
Yeah.
Trustee Palm Coffee?
Yes.
Trustee Vander? Trustee Bruceus?
Yes.
President Langfield?
Yes, yes. Save me on that word. The twenty nineteen performance evaluation of the village administrator slash clerk.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the performance evaluation for the administrator slash clerk. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All all saying, so move.
Before you adjourn, can I just record the motion to come into open session?
I read the motion.
And I second it.
Okay, thank you.
It was the three, three votes, so we're still. So do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, I will, after our finance meeting, we'll go over about that.
Sounds good.